I'll the meeting to order at 5:35. This is the Gold Beach City Council Budget Meeting. We will also have a short Urban Renewal Meeting and a short Urban Renewal Budget Meeting. But to get started, let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we will start with roll call. Just starting in order.
Summer Madison, position one.
Chip Bradley, position two.
Mr. Martinez is not here today. Councilor Skinner. Present. Counselor McGilvery.
Present.
Budget Member Vieira.
Here.
Budget Member Wagner.
Here.
Budget Member Sanders.
Here.
Budget Member Perryman.
Here.
Budget Officer Fritz.
Present.
All right, any changes to the agenda? All right. Okay, election of officers, so we need a chair and a vice chair. You can ignore that note.
I thought that was a Tammy Kaufman.
Well, it's just like somebody, sometimes everybody tries to look at everybody who doesn't want to do it. So I was like, you can fling it back at the mayor if you want to.
Oh, yeah, let's do that. You're welcome.
You're really good, Alice.
You really are.
She's the best. Who do you think polled?
You be chair, I'll be vice.
Are you going to motion?
I throw a motion.
So there's a motion on the floor for Tammy Kaufman to be the chair and Candy Perryman to be the vice chair, seconded by Counselor Madison. I'll call the question and we'll just go in order. Summer Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Counselor Skinner.
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery.
Aye.
Counsel, uh, Budget Officer Vieira.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Sanders.
Yes.
Perryman.
Aye.
Okay. I don't vote FYI. So, we will now open the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. And the first thing we need to do is Counselor Campbell was the chair and Counselor Bragano was the vice chair. And now we don't have either of them, so we need a new chair and vice chair for the actual agency. So who would like to do that, Counselor Madison?
I nominate Chip Bradley as chair.
And for this one, folks, this is just that Urban Renewal members can participate in this one.
And Belle McGilvery as vice chair.
I have a long memory.
Do you guys accept those nominations?
At an extent.
You want to make that a motion?
Yes, do you want me to make a motion? Make a motion. We vote Chip Bradley as chair and Belle McGilvery as vice chair of the Urban Renewal.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Actually, we need another few minutes.
I need one of the counselors to second.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so Counselor Skinner. I've got too many titles here. I might just start calling you by your last names. I apologize. Okay, so we got a second. And so then the vote would be Madison.
Aye.
Bradley.
Aye.
Skinner.
Aye.
McGilvery.
Aye.
And just for the budget committee members, this isn't for the budget committee. It's just we needed to elect Urban Renewal Committee Chair because both of those individuals had that prior to the budget meeting.
We need a chair to do the agenda for you.
It's really fun.
It is fun. Okay, so now we will go back to the budget meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency. And do you want to do the budget message first or do you want to do the budget first? Does the budget message include the Urban Renewal Agency?
Um, either or. Because I would say the same thing twice.
So why don't you go ahead and do the budget message first and this will apply to both entities? And then we'll do Urban Renewal first.
Okay, Anne, I give you this little disclaimer every year. Unfortunately, I have to read this into the record. I know that you all know how to read, but I have to read it into the record. So there's copies of this in front of all of you. So this is the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget message. Members of the city council and members of the budget committee. To put it mildly, the world is a mess. That's from former U.S. Secretary of State Madeline Allright. Normally I try to do pop culture ones, but given the state of the world, I figured we needed something a little more dramatic. Per the state's local budgeting manual, the budget message is a required component of the annual budget and must contain the following. Explain the budget document. Include a brief description of the proposed financial policies for the coming year. Describe the important features of the budget document in connection with the financial policies of the local government. Explain the reason for changes for previous year in appropriation and revenue items. And explain the major changes in financial policy. The budget message must be in writing and it is part of the complete budget document and is to be prepared by the executive officer of the district or in our case, the municipality. So I'm just going to go through that quickly. Explain the budget document. The budget is comprised of the following. Now, this isn't everything that you have in front of you, but when it finally gets adopted, it has all of these elements. A copy of the required public notice and dates of publication. After adoption by the council, a copy of the budget resolution adopting the budget and the state required recording form is included. Brief explanation page of each city fund type. Brief explanation of each department's functions and proposed changes for the year. Comprehensive proposed revenue and expenditure for each city fund and department. Supplemental documents for transparency, which include non-departmental indirect cost and allocation. The salary schedule for the year. Breakdown of employees by department, FTE status and base wage. And the most recent copy of the city's strategic goal. Brief descriptions of the proposed financial policies for the coming year. The budget officer proposes the budget, but does not set policy. It is the budget committee and council's responsibility and staff implements those policies. However, personally and as a city administrator, there are standards or policies, if you will, that I do hold myself to and I expect of all city employees. These were part of last year's document. We keep them, I keep them in there because I think it's important. But are relevant every year. There, these are the quotes in my office that reflect the Sanders. And so my fellow Americans, ask not what you can do, what your country can do for you. Ask what you can do for your country. And that's the late President John F. Kennedy. Complaining about a problem without posing a solution is called whining. And that's supposed to be attributed to President Teddy Roosevelt. And the great documentarian Ron Swanson says, if you choose a thankless job, you can't be upset when nobody thanks you. That's from Parks and Rec, by the way. Expectations of myself and city staff. We strive to be good stewards of the public trust and their funds because we are also part of the citizenry that we serve. We provide the highest level of service to our citizens at the lowest reasonable cost. And that doesn't mean that we always buy or utilize the cheapest. We buy and utilize the goods and services that give the city the greatest value for their dollar. We put aside some funds for unexpected events and where possible, utilize our own funds to maximize the return on investments since the open market interest is still so dismal. We strive for transparency in all transactions reporting. We provide financial information as quickly and efficiently as possible when asked. Revenue is not a money, government is not a money-making or for-profit business. We collect taxes, fees and other revenues in order to provide an equal amount of service for those dollars. If there's an excess in revenue, it is reserved and saved for a specific and stated purpose. We ensure that the city-owned property and infrastructure is maintained in good working order to maximize the useful life of property and assets. Obviously, the world pretty much 20 is unlikely to return. Daily, we are still coping with the ripple effects of the pandemic. In the past two years, a fundamental change, the way that we conduct business, and we are still making changes. The effects of global inflation are reflected in the proposed budget. As we all know, things just cost more. We are trying to limit spending to essential items and not purchase big-ticket, high-dollar items that may shortly go down in cost if, if we just wait a bit. The city has received two stimulus payments from the feds for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the ARPA American Recovery Plan Act. The allotments to units of local government were passed through the state to us. Funds were allocated based on our population and other factors. Our total allotment for the two years will be approximately $511,000. We received our first payment in August of approximately $255,000. The council held several meetings to discuss how the city planned to use the funds within the parameter set by ARPA. The funds can only be used for four specific purposes and their related uses. The council chose to use the funds to continue to address the critical shortage of housing in our area. The first allotment has been allocated to stimulate siting more accessory dwelling units, ADUs in town. And on Monday, we made our first ADU ARPA rebate in the amount of $10,000. Describe the important features of the budget document in connection with the financial policies of the city. The introductory section in the budget document for each of the city funds explains the purpose for each fund, any proposed changes for the new year and the reason for those changes. I believe those explanations are driven by the policies I have listed above. Explain the reason for changes from previous year in appropriation and revenue. The introductory section in each budget doc, in the budget document for each of the city funds explains the purpose for the fund, any proposed changes and reasons for the change. We discuss each fund individually and review the introductory sections prior to reviewing the proposed appropriations. Explain the major changes in financial policy. Again, it's not my role to set or change policy. I can only make suggestions. This would be the opportunity for the budget committee and council to discuss any changes in the city's financial policies for the next year or for the near future. The council updated our city goals last year. A copy of those is attached. Last year, people discussed returning to normal or the new normal. Between the ongoing pandemic and now the war in Ukraine, I really don't think there's any such thing as normal anymore. The way we operate has fundamentally changed and will continue to change at a more rapid pace as more global issues continue to impact us locally. And from the, like, the best sci-fi movie of all time, The Terminator. I use this one frequently. Look at it this way, in a hundred years, who's going to care? So, thank you. That's my message for this year. Thank you.
Okay, now we will resume the Gold Beach Urban Renewal Agency budget.
That, I put them separately in two different documents, from the city one and the, the Urban Renewal. I believe the way I stapled them together, the Urban Renewal is in the back section of the pack that I gave you.
Mine's in the front. Mine's in the front.
Okay, sorry.
Everybody's minded?
There's the, um, the budget page that shows the prior year. Prior three years, what we're proposing. And then the back section is portions of the adopted urban renewal plan that are relevant to the budget. And if anyone has questions about what those supplementary documents are, just call her.
You mentioned that we actually got more money than we expected, right?
Yeah, if you look at, um, if you look at the URD tax revenue, which is the second line down, column one, two, three, column four is the current year-to-date. So this is through March. As of March, we received a little over $82,000. We had budgeted $64,000. And that figure is based on the chart that we got from Elaine Howard, which is on, page six of the document. And it talks about how much we were projecting to receive each fiscal year.
And you amended that to match the actual years. Because we started late, right?
She did, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had to do that.
For her fiscal year end 2023, it says 115, doesn't it?
115, correct.
And you're budgeting 95?
Well, I went, I went with the, the 2022. That's what I was trying, because we got this, I was going to say 2018. So I used the 2022 figure, which said 96, 876. And so I just, I even went down just a smidge more and just said 95.
Yeah, so I think FYE is fiscal year end.
Correct. So fiscal year end for next year would be 2023. But if you look at where we're at now, um, I, I don't really see us coming in at 96,000. Because that would be for June 30, that would be 20, fiscal year end 2022. And that's, she was projecting that we would have basically 97,000. I don't think we'll come in at that much.
Correct. All right. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a couple. So explain the very first one, 2636100, where we go from zero interest to 14,000.
That was a good question, because that's the current year budget.
Is that the money we loaned out and we're getting payments now?
Yes, maybe that's, yes, and that is exactly what it is.
And there should be an expense for insurance for that too, right?
Um, under housing. So that was the, um, that's the White's housing project. And we did just receive the interest for this fiscal year, but it would not be reflected in this document yet.
Okay, but you are getting it this year. Great. Okay, and then I had one other question. So down there at 264320, housing loan sewer reserve. The 60,000 is in the budget. But when I look at the sewer reserve, I don't know, I didn't see where that showed on the opposite end of coming into the sewer reserve.
Okay, and that's, that's the reason why you guys get to check my stuff.
Well, I'm not saying it's not, it might be combined with something else.
No, it should have its own. I think the way that I have it lined out, it should have its own, um, line item.
And I may have.
Because the arena roof, the event center on the beach arena roof is there because they had planned on, we, we had planned to borrow some money from the sewer reserve to, to front them.
Right.
But you're right, I do not see it there, so I need to include that. And that would be, for those of you following, page 44 of the larger city budget. The sewer reserve fund, there's several inter-fund loans. So I need to make sure that the, the in and the out are there. And that's what Ms. Perryman was saying, that she didn't find the in on the other side. So I'll make that entry. Thank you, Candy. I stared at these numbers for hours and sort of like proofreading your own typing.
Anything else?
Me.
Okay. Go around the room.
I have nothing here.
Oh, I had one question though, and maybe I'm remembering wrong. But it seemed like sometimes in past years, you gave us what the balance actually is in the fund. So like in the Urban Renewal Fund now, how much money is sitting there?
And, and that is correct. And I had a list of things last week that I was supposed to have ready for today. And, and that actually was on my list and that, that did not happen. So when we're, we're done tonight, typically what we do is I go through and make all the changes and then I send you guys all the changes to make sure that you see it all. So that will be one of the documents. The other document that I had hoped to have ready for you tonight and did not was what the balance is on all of the inter-fund loans. Like, you know, when they were made, how much money's been paid to them, how much is left on them. So those two documents will come with the proposed changes in a week or so. But thank you for reminding me.
So if I'm understanding the budget correctly, you're only anticipating some small expenses. Property assistance in a small amount, community facilities in a small amount, and property acquisition in a small amount at that part. And then the administrative legal. And then I think that's Main Street.
Yep.
Now you overspent, or we've overspent that two years in a row. You think we're still okay with the 12,000?
Well, yes, yes and no. The, the budget line item went over, but they pay a portion of it back to us, so.
So there should be any income somewhere for that?
Yeah, up above where it says miscellaneous revenue. And they have yet to pay us for this. So all of the expenses for, from July to present have come out of this line item. And so far, we have not gotten their, I can't remember if it's 10,000 or 12,000. I need to look back at their agreement. Ford, I believe, was going to throw some money out, money added to.
And then.
And then we also, especially when COVID hit, which would be the 2021 year, we utilized their employee quite a bit for city-related stuff. Which I could move it back into the city, but I can't do that now that the year's ended. Lindsay did extra work for us on top of stuff because of COVID.
And then you don't have an unappropriated amount either.
No, that, that was the other document. That usually I do a spreadsheet of what the balance, the fund balance is.
My suggestion to the committee is to, whatever that number is, is to appropriate all of it in contingency if necessary.
Okay.
Because if it's an unappropriated and a project comes up, we can't touch it. And the cool thing about Urban Renewal is that if it's flexible, we can get projects done. Speak up, okay. Sorry, I will speak up.
Okay, so, because I had reduced contingency. So what I'll do is when I run those, those reports, whatever the, the fund balance is, I'll make that the contingency amount.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Then do we want to be done with this, this part of it? Can I get a motion to approve the Urban Renewal Agency budget?
With proposed changes.
With, with the, with proposed changes.
I move we adopt the, I move we adopt the Urban Renewal budget with the proposed changes.
Counselor Bradley, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor McGilvery. Um, any discussion? And I'll call the question and I'll just go down the line. Counselor Madison. Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Counselor Skinner.
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery.
Aye.
Ms. Vieira.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Sanders.
Aye.
Ms. Perryman.
Aye.
Who carries? Okay. Now, we get to decide what budget, oh, we need to do. Well, that's down there. Okay. What budget do you want to start in?
Anne, if agreeable with the members, could we start with Mr. Rudolph's funds so that he can exit stage left for the park? Because usually the general fund and other stuff takes longer.
What page would we start on?
Um, the, and I, the final budget in the table of contents too. Okay, the Will is in charge of the, the park. And so the park budget starts on page eight, the narrative. And then nine starts the enterprise funds. If you want to go over the budget comments first, and then I'll tell you where the budget pages are. Do you want to start with the narratives first?
I think that might, maybe make some questions.
Okay, so, um, the, and I'll do the first part and then questions go ahead and direct them at Will. The city owns two parks, Duckington Memorial and South Beach Park, which is where the visitor center is located. The city has a lease agreement with Prairie County for the Pocket Park at the corner of Moore and Ellensburg. So the comments that we have this year is we don't have and we can't afford, we don't have people that are dedicated strictly to the park. The vegetation management is by contract. The Public Works crews work on projects as time and resources permit. We're still having ongoing back, issues with the bathroom. I'm proposing this year to, to try a contract with somebody and we'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. I put enough money in there for the proposed contract for Janitorial. We budgeted to build the Bachi Ball Court this fiscal year, but have not had time to start it. So that expenditure is proposed to be carried over. And then this was one that I put in there, not Will. The veterans' memorial located at South Beach Park doesn't have an individual line item in the budget. And so it's been seven years since it was built. So I'm proposing to put $1,000 maintenance for that. Because I do know that we already need to do some electrical work this year. And we can have it come out of just the regular park stuff, but I just thought it would be good to see how much we're spending on, on veterans' memorial needs. So, Will, did you have anything to add to park?
Not really, maybe just clarification too on the bathroom maintenance. We have a level of folks that seem determined to break into the bathrooms and, and take out their aggressions upon them. And so during the COVID period here, we've had camp toilets and even those of them are on quite a bit of abuse. And, and so what we're doing is we're slowly bringing the park back online and trying to get these structures cleaned up, safe, ready for folks to use. But we're keeping an attentive eye on how our local culture, you know, goes with this as we open the structures back up. And because the damage they do is thousands of dollars worth. And so Jody and I are watching to determine what the best course is. These have been built by the taxpayers. They're solid structures still, but if it comes to a point where they are, we just can't take care of them, it's not prudent to put money into them, we may switch over to camp toilets. Just to maybe go through this storm. Because it's, it's just interesting. We have a different cultural dynamic now in Seattle. We've got different folks cruising around trying to camp in the park, trying to, you know, it's a challenge. So that's, that's just my comment on maintenance.
So I have a question. Is it even, is it even possible for us to consider, you know how they have the pods like in jails where it's, even in the hospital, the emergency room, there's a room there that's basically encased in stainless steel and everything is just part of, of that unit. So there's no breaking porcelain or pulling the sink out of the wall. Is that something that's even viable?
Yes, we've talked about that being our end game. We'll either use a state parks design or a state prison design. That's been proven to undergo the most malicious behavior they could throw at it. Unfortunately, they're quite expensive. And so we're doing our best to try to provide a service to the public that they've already paid for. And we're just in that trial stage. We'll see how folks can, can do as far as we have.
I actually have a question, and I might be completely out of line. I was just wondering, you said that we didn't have funds for full-time parks. Have you thought about contracting with the county at all? I know that the parks is now part of juvenile, but just helping out a little bit with, you know, they've got the kids. They've got, just for some of the maintenance and repairs so much, but you know, the weed whacking and all that. Is something that's been thought about?
You know, I just, I, I met the new employee and traveled around with him to the parks because I was an ex-county parks employee and we were just, I was showing him the lobster drink and voice cult because I was there during the build their construction. That is something that we could entertain if we could find a niche where they could fit in. Currently, Janitorial is the, is the part we're jumping back into. We used to use Mentor and for many years, and it worked out well. But there's changes in Mentor's organization now. They're out of Brookings, and so we're looking for local, maybe to do the janitorial. But we are open to ideas. And especially for contracts that we have for vegetation, that might be a consideration as well.
Any other questions?
Okay, Matt, you want me to keep going through the narratives for Will's departments?
Sure.
Okay, so the next one is going to be the street fund. And that narrative begins on page 11 of 57. The street fund is part of what's called a special revenue fund because we get revenue from ODOT. It's specific for that purpose. So the street fund is responsible for the operation and maintenance of city-owned streets. Not all of the city streets and the city limits are city-owned and maintained. Obviously, Highway 101 is ODOT. A lot of the roads out in the county are owned and maintained by Curry County. The street fund is funded solely from the ODOT gas tax distributions. We had talked, we've talked a couple of years in a row about the gas tax, putting it on the ballot again, and that hasn't happened. So last year, we implemented a $2 streets reserve charge that is collected with the monthly utility bill. And because of inflation and because we know we're going to have to increase stuff in the water fund, we're not proposing this year to increase that reserve fund just due to inflation right now. So the budget comments, and then Will can add anything. We'll get to personnel costs when we get to the general fund. But Will says that he proposed 40,000 for street construction and repair with the transfer from that reserve fund that I was talking about. Asphalt paving, patching, and perhaps an overlay. And then I'll let, we'll give him a short update on what's going on in Streets Department.
All righty, with Streets, as Jody mentioned, we, as this money has come in, it's our duty to take and put it to exactly what the public is paying for. And we have some definite candidates all over town. In fact, some of the streets are so bad you'd think you're in Old England. They look like cobblestone because the asphalt has failed and the base is soft. And so I've got a hit list of a half a dozen places that I'd like to start overlaying and begin putting that back into the street system, which sorely needs it. And so as Jody mentioned, we're doubling what we'd like to put towards asphalt this year, and up to 40K. And the reason we do that is next door, when Tidewater provides all the asphalt for our projects, next door in Wedderburn, to fire that plant up, they like to see 100 tons worth of asphalt come through there. And otherwise, we have to pay a special fee for them to operate it just because of stout costs, and it's a business. And so as we craft asphalt overlays and jobs around town, I work with Tidewater staff to try to get the most bang for the buck to get an asphalt project where we can get the lowest price per ton on asphalt and get a good product at the same time. And so when we're in the $20,000 range, that just barely gets going. That's usually short runs of asphalt, and you don't see much. And you get Hallmark Streets where you have a really nice batch of asphalt, and then you have old asphalt, nice. We, that's not really our goal. Our goal is for it to complete a street and then back away from it and get it done right. And so 40,000 allows us to do a nice overlay, perfect curve, and solve some of these sections as a whole and then just back away. So that's why you've seen it double, and they're what we're only asking for.
Okay, so then the two other funds that Mr. Rudolph is in charge of are what are called enterprise funds. Basically, those are like the business funds of the city. The water utility and the sewer utility, wastewater. Revenue from the sale of domestic drinking water inside the city limits and within the urban growth boundary supports the operation of the water treatment and distribution system. And also, that's what helps for fire suppression. The Public Works Department, there are six folks that work in that department, and three are paid out of water, four are paid out of sewer. A water rate study that was conducted at the end of fiscal year 2015-16, that was reviewed and adopted, and a new rate structure went into place in October of that year. And to keep pace with inflation, we adjust the rates annually based on what's called a municipal cost index, which is an inflation factor that's kind of specific to cities because we have specific things that we buy and purchase that like the general public doesn't. So obviously, we know that it's going to be big for this year. So the water rates, the year COVID hit, we did not adjust them. But for fiscal year 2022, the year that we're in right now, in July, we adopted a 5% increase to keep up with that municipal cost index. We're in the double-digit inflation now, obviously. So for the, when I put together the projected revenues, I ran the MCI for the period of March 2021 to March 2022, which is their most recent table they have, and inflation was at 12.16%. Obviously, that's a big number to swallow. So what I have proposed in the budget is a 10% inflation factor rather than 12.16. So for the, and then the same goes for the sewer rates at 10% based on the municipal cost index. So. That, let's see, the COLAs for employees, that will come later. And Will, did you have anything for water and sewer?
Yes, I did. I'd like to point out some of the changes that we've done in the funds. Most of the lines stayed the same in both the utility budgets, but I want to bring to your attention some of the increases that we've had, some things that went into this year. One of the largest ones is in treatment chemicals for our water plant. I've seen a 30% increase in the cost of alum, and that's one of our core chemicals that we use to remove dirt.
Just speak a little louder.
Sure. It's one of our core chemicals that we use to remove turbidity from the water, which is dirt and drainage. And so that's rather concerning. One of the things that we are doing with our water treatment plant project is we're going to bulk chemicals on site, hoping that that will alleviate some of the cost increases and also allow us to get out and shop because they'll actually bring down tankers instead of using, we're using 55-gallon drums right now. And so that's tough to politic, to get a good price on 55-gallon drums. It's just not a common source of container anymore. But slight increase on electricity, just what the market's at right now. We are keeping capital outlay the same. We still have meters to change out, water meters. Unfortunately, with a split crew for the last couple of years during the COVID part, we didn't have enough staff on hand to do, fully focus on changing out meters. And so I still have quite a few meters in stock that are brand new that I need the crew to go out and install. But we keep that money in there to continue. We still have approximately 480 or so meters to change out within the system, and then we'll be complete.
I'm sorry, how many?
About 480. And we have 1,420 services at this time. So the city crew's done a great job of just putting their nose to the grindstone and getting those changed out. We changed all the commercial ones first. Those are your largest revenue sources. And now we're working on just residential. Those are the basics for water. Wastewater is going to be a quiet fund.
So just to make sure everybody's following along, so you've been on page 29, correct?
Well, Will's just talking about his.
Yeah, just update 29, page 29 for the water utility budget. And then sewer utility is right after that on 30. Pretty quiet over in wastewater this year. We're steady as she goes. Thankfully, we haven't seen any price increases for the treatment of waste. And so not very many changes, like I said, in that. Although one thing that we are working on is some of our pump stations are coming around 20 years old. And so I'll be reaching out to the city engineer to make an assessment on those and recommendations for replacement or rebuild. And that, if that doesn't occur this fiscal year, it'll be next contract service.
Okay, so those are just the narrative pages. So the revenue and expenditure pages for Will's department, Parks, is on page 26. So if there's any questions about the park revenue, well, then it's just expenditure.
I had a question on Parks. I noticed that you reduced the amount for fly tools, the building and ground by $10,000 over last year's budget. And to two prior budgets, you were in the 23,000 to 25,000 range. Is there a reason for that, or?
Yes, we've completed a lot of the plans that we had for Kid Castle. We had purchased rubber chips last year. We had put in some new playground structures. The bocce ball, as Jody mentioned, was proposed.
And that's probably left at 20.
During last year's budget meeting, and so we kept that in. We were unable to construct that. So it's down 10,000 just simply because we completed the capital projects that we wanted to. I am foreseeing that the crew will be fairly busy covering my normal role around town as the water treatment plant capital projects start. I'm currently spending about 50% of my time working on the distribution side as they dig up the lines or have questions about storm drains with the current water main project. And so the park is usually where the labor goes once everything else has been covered, unless there's an immediate necessity. We try to get it ready in the spring and then kick it loose to the kids and parents during the summer and take care of it as needed if there's safety or other issues arise. But I'm foreseeing a small labor shortage this year with what we've got going.
Yeah, I noticed that that $10,000 looks like it ended up in contract services. Is there a reason why that's gone up by 10,000?
That was the proposal for the janitorial.
Okay.
So we.
For like the bathrooms and stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
And I don't know that it'll be that much. I was just kind of projecting the ballpark of what I thought it might be. And it could be that it doesn't work out, and we need to go back to doing what we're doing now with the porta potties. But it would be nice if we could use our building and not have people destroy it, so. Was that, I'm sorry, was that line item 1064 to 91? Yeah, the very last one, Buckett 10, contract services. And that 40,000 includes the folks that come in and do the vegetation maintenance. They don't just mow. They do tree cutting and all, anything that grows or whatever, they're the ones that deal with that. And then I added an additional, whatever the difference is between last year and this year for post-janitorial. And then if we had a little bit extra of, because sometimes they do extra, like if a tree needs to, a special tree needs to be taken down or whatever, that's kind of over and above their normal contract.
Where are the chemical toilets now being filled at? What one is?
I believe they come out of the building and grounds right now. Because they're not coming out of garbage, because the garbage line item is 590. So I'm thinking they're coming out of the 1064 to 65. Okay, what is the temperature like for folks in here? And be honest, because is it cool? Is it warm? Is it okay?
I'm good.
I'm feeling a lot of AC where I'm sitting, but.
Well, you're right underneath where it's, yeah. But I can change the direction of where it's going.
Valerie, you said it was a little chilly.
I'm chilly.
Okay.
My right hand is colder than my left. Maybe because it's over here on the mouse.
If I may ask a question while she sets the temperature or the direction. So the city has an agreement with the school district or the high school for the softball, you're correct?
Not really.
An informal agreement?
It's informal.
And so what is the responsibility of the high school or the school district in exchange for having such a large portion of the park? What are the responsibilities that you're aware of as far as maintenance goes?
Well, kind of what I've worked out with the coaches is they have a higher level of expectation for grass fight in the infield. And that's due to like a grounder being dangerous. If the grass is too tall or there's lumps or bumps out there, whoever's in the outfield can get a ball in the face when it gets a bad roll. And so I said, our contract with our landscaping folks, they will cut to whatever level their mower is set at. But anything that you need that's lower than that, you're required to perform that on your own for the games. Trying to, since we don't have any money changing hands or doing anything, if they have special needs, we ask them to cover that.
In that area?
In that area. And we take care of the fencing and the security off-season. But during the season, I kind of work with the coaches to go, listen, I need you to keep an eye on, you know, keep clean the areas that you're using. Because actually, they're just, they're like another park user. They've got an agreement. So if, you know, I kind of, and they're good. They come up to the bar. They don't have too many problems.
Okay, so any more questions? We'll move on to the street fund, which is the next page, 27 and 28. And then any, I don't think we did any big changes there, but any questions, please, please ask.
I think you missed street addressing fees. We're going to get a lot of houses. We're going to have addresses.
Yeah, what it does, it pulls over the current year budget. And I had not budgeted anything for this current year, so I can put some money in there.
Your mayor is a little optimistic.
So like $500? Does that sound?
How much do you charge for addresses?
Well, usually, you know, and the mayor's probably not going to like me hearing this, but usually if you build in a brand-new house, I don't get you for the cost of it because we're just happy that you built a house, and now we have tax revenue, and now we get to charge you for utility and stuff. Usually what the street fees are is that if they need a new plate over and above the one that they were already issued, we do charge for an additional one on that. And occasionally, a vacant lot will need it. Partly, a lot of these lots already have addresses issued to it. Unlike the county, the county, like when I worked there, we don't issue addresses because then you can get electricity and stuff, and you may be in an area where you're not allowed to have a house. Well, in the city, everybody can have a house. So a lot of lots already have an address issued to them. But occasionally, we'll get a lot that has not had an address issued. But I'd say maybe we issue maybe three addresses a year. The ones on Curb, all of those addresses have been issued back in the late 2000s. So, yeah, there's a lot there, Mayor, but they already had addresses, sorry.
Okay, so it doesn't matter.
But I can put some in there if you want. It's not a problem. Going to line item 2148 to 95. And this is probably 50 first dates because I've been on the Budget Committee for the last eight years, and I'm sure I ask the same questions over and over again because I don't remember what they are. So the contract services.
Yes.
I mean, there was quite a jump from 2,67500 up to 30, almost 32,000, 18,000.
I'm sorry.
The very bottom line on page 27, 295, contract services. And then we budgeted for this year 7,000. Ended up, just right now, as of March, we're at 18,000 and change. But yet, we've kept the fiscal, the proposed budget year 22, 23 at 7,000.
Yes. The reason it's so high is when we did the ODOT grant project up at Sixth Street around Riley Creek School, all the engineering fees fell to 1,000. Riley Creek School, all the engineering fees fell to us. Those were not billable to the grant project. And so, within that, we ran into storm drain, we ran into excess engineering for some of the survey and curb locations. And I think they almost got close to disturbing a monument, which is extremely expensive as well in surveying world. So, what happened is that was the bitter pill, is in order to use and make the grant project run, we had to spend out-of-pocket on engineering. So, that's why there was such a large gap on that.
We don't have a project this year, so, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We are proposing, on the next page, on page 28, we are proposing to transfer in some money from the, I'm sorry, transfer in some money from the culvert reserve for that paving that Will was talking about. Sorry, that was on the page, we were just on, transferring.
Can we go back to that previous, line 14295? So, that huge jump, even between the years 2018, 2019, to 2019, 2020, that's a significant change there.
Yes.
You're giving me a history lesson, thank you.
A lot of that had to do with extreme weather. We went through a period where we dealt with some culvert problems on Cola Lane. We also went through engineering, I'm trying to remember back.
I think part of that was MCA also, because it went into two years.
Yes, it was probably the initial MCA. We were successful in getting grants two years in a row, which is unheard of, but nobody applied in the second year. So, I told Jody, I said, no, we're about to strike, and we were awarded a second grant. But we were out-of-pocket on engineering on the first year as well. And that was the biggest year, because the project scope was much larger. The second year, we kind of surfed on the first year's contract and just rolled it in there and already had some of the engineering done, so we didn't get hit quite as hard on inspection and other stuff.
So, then looking at that, staying at that $7,000 mark seems more realistic?
Yes. And that just usually covers, if we have a storm drain culvert failure, or I have extreme road issues, like it's, we've had problems before with loggers that, you know, knock out guardrails with a yarder and do, other people that do all kinds of strange things to the street. You wouldn't think it would be possible to hurt that structure, but in order to get a replacement to match what was previously there, have to include the engineer and so that we get a proper build out of their insurance company. And so, we always put about that amount in there, just for unforeseen. And I, oftentimes, we don't use it if the weather's nice and we don't have any strange issues like that, or slides. We've had some extreme slides in the past that took us by surprise. You'll see that take a hard hit in contract services.
Thank you. Okay, any more on streets? Okay, so, water utility starts on page 29. And I don't think we had any...
When you talked about still having water meters to change out, what line item was done in?
That's gonna be under system construction in the back under Capitol Roadway.
Okay.
So, you see it on page 30.
Yep.
It's the system construction replacement, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so 2245-30.
Yeah.
That's also a catch-all, broken water mains, unforeseen problems that occur within the water system, they get drawn out of that line as well.
I'm sorry, I don't think I heard the line item number.
It's 2245-30.
On page 30, yeah.
Okay, midway through 30.
And we haven't spent anything out of that so far, as of March, just because we've been working, the crew's been busy with the capital project that's been going on. Typically, I think we have 40,000 in there. Any questions on the water utility fund? Okay, moving along to the sewer utility fund. The, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make you go back.
No, that's fine.
So, the material service intake and treatment, I know you had mentioned about the chemicals needed to treat the turbidity of the water. Does that fall under the 2241-250, or?
That falls under the next one, or C51?
C5, okay. Oh, where it says treatment and chemicals? That's the line. Wow.
Stuff like testing goes down below.
So, I guess then the question is, what would be the 250 line item before?
The 250 line item is if we have a pump fail or electric motors, diet plant, all equipment that's needed for water treatment or pumping and active. Also have a series of valves up there. Now, the project that we're going into, or hope to go into this next year, there'll be replacement of many of those items. And so, we're excited to see some of those get rebuilt, replaced. And the design life on a lot of these components is 20 years, which we're at 23 years right now. And that's why we're seeing, I keep this line item kind of built up, just in case, because I've got a compressor right now that's talking. It's been in service for 23 years. And it's letting us know.
And going down to 272, the laboratory testing, why would we continue to do the 4,000 budget?
Now, what it does is that reflects a cost. We get passed down required testing from the US government, as well as the state. And those land in very strange times. We've gotten every exemption you could possibly get, and so that our frequency is extremely long. Some of our tests are nine years apart, some are three. But when we go to test, we test for like radionuclides, all kinds of inorganic chemicals and synthetic chemicals. And every time I call for one of those tests, there's at least $600 going out for the testing, not including the freight. And sometimes, those tests, if you get into the radionuclides, you can get up over $1,000. It's comprehensive and we're looking at like 40 different potential, you know...
So, it's worth the price, it's just a chunk of money?
But that's why that is in there. If there's any required state testing that lands within the year, we just completed lead and copper. And so, this next year, our standard round runs, I think, about 2,000, 2,500 a year, just to complete the mandatory tests that don't change, that are any.
Yes, but I did notice that on the previous page, there's laboratory testing at 2240-272, and that one went down by $2,000. So, it's kind of like it went up, but it didn't go up as bad as it looks by itself there.
So, you're not including the travel that staff is having to do now that they didn't, you don't used to have to do in your testing?
Not out of the lab testing line. This just goes to the laboratories. And the reason there's two different ones, you have one in the water side and then in the treatment side, is the coliform testing that we do three times a month, that comes out of the water system in town, and we keep that separate for the lab testing. And that should reflect travel or, you know, there is a travel training one that we could build in.
Yeah, and then the driving it up there goes, comes out of the travel budget. We used to be able to take the sample over to the hospital and it went with their lab work, but like, I don't know, four or five years ago, that went away. So, now we have to drive it to Cuse Bay a few times a week.
That seems really light, when you have to go to Cuse Bay at least three times a month.
Well, you can see where it's at.
Are you just absorbing the hours?
Well, I mean, we would pay the employee if they were here or not here. That travel just includes the cost of traveling, their...
So, I guess you catch it indirectly?
Yeah, yeah. Because the salaries for the front office come out of everybody's department.
Another question. Is the frequency of that test being done on a monthly basis, or three times a month?
Yes.
Is that due to the capacity of the system?
Yes, it's due to how many connections we have.
Okay.
And we're currently under 3,000. When we get over 3,000, then it would tick up to a higher frequency.
And if you get a bad one, they give you more too.
Yeah. Last question I have is 2241-295, contract services.
Yeah, okay. That is gonna be incredibly important with what direction we're going with the work on the intake. If there are parts in that project that fall outside the scope of the grant for engineering, I'm gonna be using dyer to engineer like catchalls. There could be conflicts that are outside the scope of the project, and then what they do is they bill us outside that. And that's what that fund will be used for, is things that we can't foresee at this time. Similar to engineering contingency.
Thank you.
Any other questions on water? Then we can move on to your budget officer.
Do what?
She was rushing you.
Yeah, those are great questions.
Page 31.
Did you just say something about me, mayor?
Something about you rushing the word count?
Yeah, sorry, if I'm rushing you, I am sorry.
I spilled you to him, don't worry, after...
That's not my intent.
It's in the record.
It's because you wanna go home. Okay.
No, I just wanna get to the nasty stuff. Will has all the more fuzzy stuff.
So, I had a question on the sewer charges. I see you increased expected revenue there pretty considerably by $47,000. Is that reflective in the extra surcharge on the utility bill?
No. The surcharge for the reserve, that doesn't go into this fund at all. That was what I was explaining on the 10% inflation. And for the sewer fund, and if you wanna follow along, this is page nine of the budget, going back to that, it's adjusted annually by the municipal cost index. So, of the current water bill that somebody gets, $54.62 is your sewer bill. Of that, $25.62 is the portion that goes into the sewer fund. The rest of that money, the other $29, goes into debt service funds and reserve funds that we will get to later. But that 52,500 is that what we currently charge 2562 for. So, for the inflation for next year, we are proposing a 10% increase in the basic monthly sewer rate. So, currently, for the year that we're in right now, that basic sewer rate is $25.62. We are proposing a 10% increase, because the inflation was 12 point something, and I thought that would be a little bit difficult. So, it will be 2818. The $29 reserve and debt service, that stays the same, because that's a static figure. So, the 50, 500,000, 522,500, sorry, is based on that 2818 per month.
I have such a juvenile question, but if I don't ask now, I'll email it to you tomorrow. Does that MCI ever, do you ever see that go down?
Yes, actually, in the past it has.
Do we follow suit with that?
Typically, if it goes down, we just don't do a rate increase.
Okay.
Yeah. Because other costs do actually still go up. But if it does show that there's a decrease, then we just keep the rates the same that year. And that was part of why in 2020, when COVID hit, we didn't increase our rates that year.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a verbal decision.
Yeah. Did that answer your question, Dave?
Well, my next follow-up question to that is, I understand that following the MCI is a good policy, but are there additional expenses in the budget that reflect that? I mean, I went through the budget, it looks exactly pretty much like it was last year. I don't see where that additional $47,000 is either required or is being allotted to other items.
Well, we didn't increase things by 10%, but that's not to say that there won't be increases, like Will was saying, the cost of certain chemicals and stuff. But when we get to the general fund and we start talking about the cola for this year, because the portion of the MCI that covers that, that's not just for materials, that's also for labor costs as well.
That was gonna be my question. Can these colas not happen without the rate increase?
Correct.
So, it's going on the backs of the people paying for water and sewer?
Exactly.
And we have an awful large population on fixed student cover? Their colas didn't go up 10%?
No, but I'm not proposing a 10% cola for employees. I'm proposing a less than a cola than the social security people got.
Yeah, I'm talking about the water bill when it shows up on your doorstep with a rate hike.
And again, like I said, in the other side, I, this is just what the budget officer is proposing, I don't set the policy. So, if you guys don't, are not comfortable, because if I went strictly with the MCI, which is what we normally do, they're saying that it was 12.16%. So, I didn't think that that probably would get swallowed. So, I said, okay, let's propose 10. But I did not put a 10% increase across the board in the budget, so...
Okay. And just so you know, I did this at home, because it's like, 10%, I wanna grow. So, I took my own water bill. And I mean, so the water is gonna increase by $2.53, the water reserve by $1, and the sewer by $2.56. So, my bill is going to increase $6.09 per month, which to me is not unreasonable, times 12, that's $73 a year. And it's less than I pay for my internet and TV and that kind of stuff, so. I was worried, the sound of 10% scared me, but when you look at the actual dollars, $6.09 for a normal city water sewer bill, so. Just so you know, I did my math. Thank you, Candy. So, that made me, that made me feel better about doing that.
And then, like I said, the breakdown is on, just for the sewer portion of it, the water portion, I do have the breakdown up here, but currently, it's 2562. The proposed would be 2818.
Yeah, I'm okay with the 10%, honestly. Per Candy's comments, I agree with her. I just wanna make sure that that additional money is being spent appropriately and either reserved or, you know, not just, we're not just finding stuff to spend it on.
I would, I would for sure say that Will and I are, like I said in the budget message, we're not proposing any big-ticket items. If something can wait a couple of years, because even just, you know, even this paper that we use, the cost of it is just so volatile right now. And so, if we can hold off on buying things in the next year, we would like to do that just to see that if the price of things can come down. If we can wait a year on something, I haven't bought any new computers in probably a year and a half. Part of that is because, A, you can't get them, but B, the cost is so insane right now, because chips are just not able, so we're just making do with what we got. So, yeah, I can assure you, we're not gonna do that.
Well, there's an option also for, maybe the MCI is close to zero next year, so you don't raise a rate, and then that 10% really gets spread over more than one year.
And I think that that's the logic behind when they originally came up with that, is that like Summer was saying, you know, well, what if it doesn't change? Well, then we don't do a cost increase. And then, if you look at the increase over a 10-year period, what did it come out to? You know, year after, like, what is this, 22? So, if you go to 2012 to present and you average it all out, maybe it's like a 4.8% increase annually over that. maybe it's like a 4.8% increase annually over that time. One year it was nothing, the next year it was 10, one year it was 4. And I can do that analysis too, from when we adopted the sewer and water rate study, what the change has been since then. It'd be real easy, I can just run back through the resolution. So I'll do that for the stuff that I'll send you later this week.
If I may, because I'm not so excited about the cost increase either, but if there are basic needs, given the circumstances with inflation, water is probably one of the most critical and the system that we have in place with the city is far superior than most you will visit in other jurisdictions. And our water is great water. What we pay for the quality of water, I am extremely grateful. Had I realized that that was so important when I relocated here to Old Beach over 20 years ago, I would have for certain made the decision to relocate here. I look at some of the issues that are going on in Cora River and it will actually end up costing them substantially more to get right with their system because they haven't maintained in this capacity. But I agree with you that $10, you know, I get it.
Instead of, for people have to take choice between location and food.
I agree with you.
And six breaths means something.
You guys speak up, make sure that they can bring it in camera.
Well, I just said that, just responding to Castle Madison. It's a bite for people on fixed income and especially those who may have to choose between food and medicine. Or which bill do I pay this month and which bill do I kind of hold back on in order to make it through? And it's a reality in this particular economy.
Do we have a system in place to provide relief for people on water bills?
There's a new one.
Yeah, there's a program through the place up in Kewes Bay, Orca. And Kim, if she has somebody that's struggling on their water bill, she can have them. I don't know if Kim contacts them or the person contacts them, but at any rate, Orca can help people with their water bill. And I believe that Kewes Curry does the same thing. I think they have a program.
Yeah, I know one that I listed in our water.
And actually, if you go onto their, Orca's website, you can have links to the assistance programs.
And water and sewer is new. I didn't used to do that.
Have we ever considered a roundup program like Kewes Curry does with their electric bills? For the water and sewer bills?
I haven't. That would be a, you guys' policy decision. We can certainly try something like that.
That's a great idea.
Would Castle be able to control it?
I would think so, because I got a tweet that other jurisdictions.
Usually only add 60 cents to my bill, but it puts, you know, if everyone's doing it, it puts money in Kewes Curry's pocket that assists people that are in low income or in need.
They could funnel it back to Orca, who would funnel it back to our clients.
If you want to, can ask our software provider. I'm sure they do, because they do municipal software, so I'm sure they can do that.
Yeah, it's usually an opt-in kind of a thing.
Yeah.
The good news about our water and sewer bills is that we have a very high collection rate. And the people that don't pay are pretty much the same people every month. And it was true in the pandemic as well. The people that didn't normally pay, that didn't pay. And everything didn't change.
Can we go back to Dave's question? And I might be on the wrong pages here. So you're looking at the 10%, which was the $47,000, is that right? On line page 31 of the budget? Line 2337200, is that the right spot to be looking for that 10% increase?
Correct.
Okay. So then to Dave's question, where is the, where is that, I'm not seeing, where's that $47,000 going? I saw a few small changes.
That's going to help cover the full.
So where it's going to go in the full is later. That's what I was wondering about. Where?
Yeah, where it's really showing out in this budget is contingency on page 32. If you look at 234415, that's roughly $47,000.
It's very clear, can you say it? Right here. This one. Oh, right here. So this is our current budget here. So we're proposing, so I'm looking, you guys be patient with me right now, it's been a long day.
Yeah, I know, no.
Glad you guys are all like here with your assignments and pencils and pens. So I'm looking here and I see the current budget at $50,000 and the proposed one is the same. But we're looking at, so someone's going to have to break that down and explain it to me one more time.
Well, I didn't, I proposed a 10% increase to the rates because we need to keep up with the cost of inflation. That didn't mean that I necessarily did a 10% increase across the board on everything. There is, if you go to page 32 for the transfers out, 234715, there is, you know, a substantial increase from 216941 to 244835. And that includes, there's the chart in there of the indirect costs and that includes things like insurance, because that went up by like 14%. Software, copiers. So it may not necessarily be in the sewer and water fund itself. 5% was an increase proposed for salaries. The cost of the medical insurance stayed about the same, but the liability insurance and we paid two other kinds, liability and something else that went up significantly for this next year. Thankfully, the medical insurance didn't go up that much. And then not really an increase on the material and services portion of it. But I just want you to think that because I raised it by 10%, I made an equal and greater expense for that. If it doesn't get spent, if any of the assignments don't get spent, then it goes into the reserve fund. And I would say that if anything were to happen, like if we had a capital outlay, that contingency too, that's put in there every year. And if you notice, it's zero. If it doesn't get used, it just gets zeroed out. But if we were to have some, like Will was talking about one of the pumps, if we have a pump failure and we have to chuck out, you know, 30 grand for that pump.
You've never actually expensed anything on a contingency. It goes out of the actual line item and just.
Then we transfer contingency.
If I do the math right, the income for this year to date is $398,000, that's nine months, correct?
Correct.
So the other 25% would get us to 530. So the 522, even with the increase, is a conservative number.
And I would say that was pretty conservative. Question, would that being conservative because of the Public Works FTE has been out some for like the last six months? Eden's position? We just filled that position. Oh, good. When is he starting?
Monday.
Yeah. And of course, Eden had been here for almost 12 years, so he was at a higher rate of pay. So the new person coming in is a lower staff. Right.
That was actually one of my next questions, at 234113. Is that where you're hiring someone new?
It's taken a long time.
Well, I just noticed that the proposed budget was significantly lower than the previous budget and so.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's the 13.
Going the other way, I was not even curious why that was.
Tell your young students to go into water and sewer, there's some industry there.
And let me tell you, there will always be cities that have to process water and waste. There's a job that you can have forever.
There's a shortage as the numbers are retired.
And then Dave, you will notice that same line item in the water fund too, that's split between the two.
Great question. Anything else on the sewer? Any suggested changes?
Okay, then, ma'am, may I ask, while we still have Mr. Nadal here, if he could address the project fund?
Oh, okay. Yes, that capital fund.
Okay, it's page 41. Okay, now, and I'm going to tell you before we go into it, I didn't change anything because we don't know until we talk to IFA, so I just left everything the same. But those numbers are likely to change. And then we'll let Willie's one.
Yes. So if you guys are all on 41, we are hoping that these numbers go up $2 million. That's actually the change we want to see. What we did is we put out a bid this spring to replace our water intake and do an overhaul on our water treatment plant because it's past its 20-year, you know, marker. We put the bid out, we had no responses, no bidders. And so deliberated with Jody and Aaron Speakman, our engineer for the city, and I said, let's go, let's do it again. You've already spent all this time engineering this project. We've got everything ready to go as far as funding. Let's put it out there. Now it's time to strike. Maybe somebody missed it. We reached out to all the contractors that would potentially bid and, you know, how can we make this work? And met with them, gave them a tour of the plant, answered all their questions. We got back one bidder. The bid came in a million over the engineer's estimate, which sounds shockingly high. Until his estimate was anywhere from, I think it was 2.4 to 3.1 million. And so it came in 25% higher. So we started to look at this. Now, what we've seen across the nation is 25 to 37% increase in construction costs from last year. And so that was an education for us. It didn't make the million dollar increase look any better. So to be physically responsible, we looked at chopping parts of the project out to make it fit our budget and also so that when we do an ask for another 2 million, that it fits within a threshold that IFA uses before we have to go in front of special boards. If we went over 6 million, we'd have to wait until July 20th to give a presentation and then find out yes or no. And I was unwilling to wait that long to get the answer. And so by staying under 6 million total loan package, we can go in front of the board in June, make a presentation and hopefully come away with a larger loan so that we can accept the bid. We removed $500,000 out of the project, working with the contractor. This could be added later if we are not using the contingencies. And contingency funds, when the construction goes well, we look forward to maybe adding back a portion or all of what we've taken out. Right now, I did some calculations. The current job that we're working on is a 2.4 million dollar water line job that's two miles worth of water made in town. And they're over 50% complete and we're less than 1/10 of a percent in change orders. And so that's fantastic. And we've always had that performance with the DIRE partnership because they write a really airtight plan and good construction inspection. We work with the contractors ourselves by using city resources to try to cover anything that we find underground that hampers the project from moving on. And so by working with a contractor, we keep the change orders at a minimum. Now, if we're able to do that on the intake for our project next year, I'm hoping that we can experience the same low change order percentage. But right now, you know, what's coming up in the future is next month, Aaron Speakman, myself, Jody, will be going in front of a board and seeing.
Probably Tammy.
Probably Tammy. Congratulations. We'll be going to Albany Org to give a sales pitch to IFA and see if they'll cover what our increases are and so we can get on with this thing.
What's your expected start date on construction if you get the additional funds?
If we get the additional funds, we'll go through a formal award. The contractor has agreed to hold us prices. So then we'll be beholden to his construction schedule. That's one thing that we lost control of, not being able to award it now. So I expect the most coveted months are the summer months and so we won't see them until October, November. And that's if we strike fast, get money and say, when are you coming? You know, and what can we do to get you to order the pumps and the long lead items like right now? What we're finding is it could be a year out, year and a half out on parts and pieces in manufacturing. And so we strategize these projects in like fashion. So the day that we get approval, we'll be asking them to order the pumps and things such as this. But that's still, even with that strategy, shows wintertime construction at the water plant intake.
Is there a reason we don't want to amend the budget now to that extra round?
Yes, because I don't know, I have to get from Tony and Brandy what is left of the construction administrative and engineering and what will be added. So I just put what we had in there for the year, this year.
So no matter what, we'll need a budget amendment next year?
Maybe, maybe not. Because that is saying how much revenue we expect to get from them. That's not total, that's just for this year. So that's why I left everything high. And I think that it actually may cover. Because like you can see like year to date, how much we've received and how much we've spent. If we leave it at the 3.795 million and the 850,000 for expenses, I don't think we'll have that much for the new project. But I just left everything high because then I don't think that we will have to amend it. So we'll see. But hopefully IFA will approve our loan amendment. We're asking for a little less than $2 million more. We currently have a $4 million loan with them. And they did just call me today, or yesterday.
If I may, what's the loan payback mechanism?
That sewer reserve fund where Candy was talking about the $1 will increase. The water reserve increases incrementally and that is, I want to say the 62 fund? 64 fund, the one just prior to it. And when I talked to them, you could see the reserve charge for, that I'm proposing for next year is we'll bring in $134,000. That gets put into the reserve fund to start building up our. They want to see, it's basically like buying a car. They want to see that you have the funds to pay back your loan. And so we had to show them when we first got the loan in 2019 that we had adopted the water rate study, we adopted the plan. The water rate study included all of the capital projects. This is just two of the capital projects that were identified. They figured out how much it would cost to fund every one of those projects and said, okay, at the end of 20 years, you need to be bringing in this much money for debt service. And so in order to service the debt for this, they said we needed to be at X amount per month. That's where like on your sewer bill, where that $29 a month doesn't change, that's the debt service portion of it that goes to paying off the wastewater treatment plan. So I don't know, when I talked to them, I can't remember if it was Mr. Raymond today, we will not have to start paying back the loan until the project is completely finished. It's all completed. So he said probably as soon as we would have to start making a payment would be not this coming December, but next December. So next year for the budget, we'll budget for a payment on the loan. I'm sorry, Dave, that's why I wouldn't want anyone to know.
Just wanted to make sure we were budgeting to pay for it.
Yep, yep, we are. Okay, now, I believe that is all of the will funds, right?
Yeah, and just one vehicle purchase.
Oh, right.
State revenue sharing.
The, we alternate between police cars and Public Works. Police car got actually pre-bought last year. So Will needs a new truck, so that's what's, that one is.
And he can buy a new truck for $24,000?
Probably not, we probably have to.
I want to know where you get it, if you know.
No, that's something we get for state revenue sharing. We. We have for the last several years had to supplement that money.
I do get a hot deal. There's some guys that just sell the munis. In some equipment purchases, we can be tax exempt. And so the deal that we get, there are no residents can ever get the deal we get when we exempted from taxes. Abaco is a great example. We purchased a tobacco, goodness, three years ago. It gives you sticker shock to know tobacco's worth of about $110,000, $105,000. If you were a general contractor, you would pay $200,000. So you get exempted $100,000 with the taxes.
Wow.
On those. It's fantastic. It's a fantastic deal for munis.
I think you answered one of my other questions on the fleet replacement fund. That $53,983 on 914290 was a new police vehicle?
Yeah, yeah, we had the, that will be, that will be a supplemental budget to square that up.
How are we sort of ready, temperature-wise? And do we need a break?
Yeah, I'm good and yes.
A break?
Yes.
Okay.
But I have a quick question, though.
Okay, before we let Mr. Will go?
Yes. So silly question, whenever you're buying your truck, is there, is there anything that you, when looking for the new truck, that it could be used for like dual purpose?
In most cases, when we're buying a utility-style truck, that's exactly what we're looking at. We have toolboxes on the back, we buy lift gates and things like that. Both the, all four departments use the same trucks since we're a combined crew down there. And so we're carrying wastewater tools, water tools, streets-related, you know, tools on there as well. This pickup this year, you know, half ton, four-wheel drive so I can get to the reservoirs in the winter. And that's about it, as good as it gets. Icebox white, basically.
Tricked out as you get, huh?
Yes. Very not tricked out. Vinyl formats, vinyl seats.
Yeah, a little outdoor.
Do you still make those ones? Have they been lobbed on the side that goes like this?
Yeah, probably one of that truck.
And you have to put a key in it, probably.
Yes, no keypads, no fobs.
So another educating venue person question. So does the old truck be sold for a cost that goes into the budget or stay to be a fleet vehicle?
It depends.
It'll be, we usually put it out, out front with the price on it, highest bid takes it. We know pretty much what market value is. It's a great time to sell used truck, highest used truck value you've ever seen.
We'll probably get a lot on that for it. Yeah, we just, we just did a blind bid on this police vehicle. We bought it used when Russ Merkley was here, and that was like, wow, 2008. And it was used then.
It was in 2004. Barely moved down the road anymore, got double what it was worth.
Yeah, with the Kelly D hook. But sometimes the older vehicles, especially the police ones, we keep them for other purposes. But if it's a tired old brig and it's going to cost us more money to keep it, or we don't have anywhere to house it, then we will sell it by bid. Will gets to take it on.
Can you help for?
You're doing that next day.
Okay, why don't we take like a five-minute break and come back about quarter after? All right, what fund would you go, like to look at next? Probably the police department, so the chief can go.
Okay, so the general fund, budget comments are on page seven. So police department provides public safety to the citizens in a way of law enforcement and community policing. Members of the Gold Beach Police Department are professional staff dedicated to providing high-quality law enforcement services. Currently, we have, the department has seven FTE, the chief, sergeant, court control officers, and DME. So chief, if you have anything that you would like to say, go for it. And I will get the budget page for whatever.
First of all, ladies and gentlemen, just thank you for being part of this process. And I know it's a lot to take on, and I wish I could, in a short period of time, explain all the changes that law enforcement has experienced in the last couple of years. You'll look at the budget and see we nearly have few changes proposed in the coming year. We certainly expect an increase in things like gas, but we're seeing the same increases in cost of almost everything across the board, including technology. As we continue to adopt new technology, it just gets to be a little more and a little more expensive in everything that we do. Luckily, we have very few new additions that we plan to make other than in the area of training. There's been mostly mandated changes that have come down through the legislature due to the trends in law enforcement over the last couple of years. The legislature's moved to make more mandates, especially on small agencies regarding training because they believe that if they don't, well, and duly so, that if it's not required of us, we don't choose to do it. And for a small agency like ours, we don't have any extra people. We run a knife-edge schedule that even if one person's gone, it costs us in overtime and burnout, and we've been juggling that. I took over in October, and we've been able to bring a lot more of our training in-house just to meet our legal compliance in the areas of use of force and weaponless defensive tactics, de-escalation training, and critical incident response. Fortunately, the two new additions to the agency are myself and Sergeant Teeter to replace Chief Woods and Sergeant Miller, who also have a lot of experience, but luckily Sergeant Teeter and I bring a lot of instruction qualifications and background. So we've been able to host trainings here, which reduces some of our travel costs, but also brings a level of training that Gold Beach hasn't previously enjoyed because there's just no close place to go. And while we've been able to work in a partnership with a school right now to use their mat rooms and things like that to do more hands-on training, we've been able to increase some of those resources to be able to do that training. Actually, right where you guys sit right now, we'll be putting, making this our mat room and doing trainings on the evenings and weekends when it's not used for business meetings. So our goal of the police department is to exceed our mandates, not just meet them, by delivering a higher quality of training to our personnel. We know that right now it's hard to keep employees in any field, but almost every police department is massively increasing their police budgets in recruitment incentives and retainment incentives to the tune of $5,000 to $50,000 per officer across the state. We have no incentives planned for our officers, but we have made a commitment to them for their health and wellness and their professional development to help them feel safer on the road. We currently have one officer on duty most of the time by themselves, usually at the most critical time. Right now, I'm monitoring an incident with a person with a gun outside the ER. We have one person dealing with that. Luckily, we have a couple county units helping them, but the county is continuing to suffer staffing-wise, and that's our backup. So right now, our goal is to get the officers we do have as equipped and qualified as possible. We can't just buy them the tools and have them safer. It's a combination of training them with all of their tools, including their mouths, to be safer and more effective in their job. And luckily, we're at that place, and my commitment to them is, "I'm chief. You guys can call me out all hours of the night and day. I'm there within five to 10 minutes because I live right down the street and I, my life is at home. So I'm very available and I don't cost any extra." Unfortunately, because of the current trends we're seeing in the community, those callouts, I think I've worked every, I don't remember when I've actually taken a day off. So you'll see me in and out quite frequently, but it's because I'm literally being called in every day to back up officers and deal with violent offenders that we just haven't dealt with. Yesterday, we took down a wanted fugitive being hunted by the marshal service on their way up from California. They made it by five deputies and came into Gold Beach and were intercepted by our officers. So we're seeing more people utilizing the 101 corridor to escape interception by larger agencies. And we still don't have officers on 24 hours a day. We just won't because of our staffing and our community demographics. But that does mean that we get called out more. So as we look at ways to retain our police force and then continue to improve the performance that we have, we need to continue to invest in them and make sure that their equipment, which includes all of this, most of our officers purchase their own personal equipment, their handcuffs, their tools of the trade, with the technology, their body cameras, their taser. I actually have a taser that's close to 20 years old because we've just broken the ones we have. And fortunately, we've just ordered a replacement for that. But I get the oldest, brokenest gear because we're in a high liability industry, and if I carry its liability that's on me as the chief for failure to equip and train our officers, if for some reason they don't have equipment that works, unfortunately falls on me, then it falls on all of you to pay the price for that. So luckily, when we look at the budget here, we've been able to factor in replacements and improvements without seeing a marked increase in cost. And the way that we do that is generally to hold major purchases towards the end of the year to compensate for any increases such as fuel costs or broken equipment, which is expensive. Our computers and our tasers and those things are thousands of dollars apiece. So our goal is to not buy anything that's not absolutely necessary so our taxpayers in a small community don't look at our police department and think, "Wow, you guys cost too much." I mean, what we deliver to the community hopefully is value that they never experience. So any questions that we have, I certainly, I know we buy things you guys would never normally think about. So any questions you have, I'm more than excited to explain any line on them. Yes, ma'am?
I do have a question. You've been sitting here during the city council meetings and listening to us talk about increasing residential housing in this area. That means a population increase. Is that going to be able to impact your force at all as far as personnel is concerned?
You know, it's unfortunate that in this industry and public safety, and that includes fire, medical, and everything, we operate on a lagging increase. So we see, and I came, my previous industry, I've been in this 26 years, was in an area that grew exponentially quickly from a very small demographic like we are now to a very large one very quickly and continues to. We made, the place I came from is the fastest-growing small metropolitan area in the country. So I'm very familiar with what that looks like. And I expect that we will see housing increase, especially if we had a large, low-income housing project go increase. That would bring work to us that we wouldn't see the benefits of until the tax revenue makes it responsible for us to increase our services. Now, there are tax opportunities and things, or grant opportunities to add officers, but it's a long-range commitment for the community because those just fund, usually about a three-year percentage, it's 75% right now, but in order to get that employee, we commit to them for a career essentially. So we do have options to add that increase. And right now, I just don't feel the need that it would be responsible to come to you folks and ask the community for more full-time employees. I think our capacity is solid now. I'd rather invest in the people that we have and maintain an expectation of excellence. So when we do grow the police force, they'll look at us as a place they want to work and a team they want to be part of. And that now, I think by doing that and letting this fluctuation occur as we come out of COVID, it's responsible right now to be conservative, and I don't think we have more work than we can handle. To add to the safety that we'd like to see of 24-hour coverage and two officers on a shift, we'd be looking at rookies and suddenly we turn around and have 16 officers just to meet the basic requirements. And that's just out of reach for right now. But I think the priorities that I see for our community is to create a pathway for our officers to live within the city of Gold Beach so the callouts can be shared equally. Right now, there's just me and one other officer living in the city of Gold Beach. And it's not fair to burn out our one only senior officer for all of the emergency callouts. But that would, that would change our community without adding additional staff. So ways that we can do that are up in the air, but it is something that I know we think about every day when we look at housing.
Have you considered maybe like an entry-level cadet or ride-along program?
Part of the problem with that, we did have a reserve program, and you could say technically we still do have a program, but the cost unfortunately of adding anyone into the force right now is so extreme because of the legislative changes that are required, including a comprehensive psychological evaluation, even for a reserve officer who would technically only cost us insurance expenses and equipment. Instantly adds a $2,000 commitment on the taxpayer to put that person through that psychological evaluation. So by the time we meet the minimum training requirements and get those entry-level examinations done, we have asked essentially the community to spend somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 for someone who just may not like the work and leave it quickly. And that's what we found is more folks have left. And if I had a base of qualified, experienced folks like myself who moved here and weren't ready to be completely done but wanted a part-time gig, I would be open to anything that was practical and reasonable to bring to Madam Mayor and the council to say, "I think we need to consider this." And that would be someone who was already trained and qualified and comes to the community with all this experience, but just requires these basic required legislative improvements to get them qualified to work through Gold Beach. So I think we'll never take any opportunity off the table, but we're also not, not out there banging the drums trying to create new solutions.
At your razor-edge staffing level, have you and the city council brainstormed any kind of pre-hiring plan in case you have an officer resign, take an opportunity somewhere out of the area? I'm dealing with that at our company on a regular basis. They call it the great resignation, but you know, people are really reevaluating their situation, where they're at, and moving closer to family or trying things that they haven't ever tried before.
You know, and that's exactly where I'm, what I'm looking at right now. We have benefits that in our community that are changing constantly with the demographic. I believe our recruitment process is strong to be able to bring in a trained and qualified lateral entry if needed. So pre-hire, I've done pre-hires in the past, and they're a very valid process because it does take one year to bring somebody from application to practical employment, which means they've completed the academy, all of the ride-along requirements, and so on and so forth. Right now, I'm basing the pre-hire and what other agencies are doing. If they find a candidate that comes in really excited and interested in it working, and then it would be a proposal that we would submit for an amendment to the budget and a plan to bring that person on as a pre-hire, just to be able to capture them so they don't pass through our fingers to go to another agency if they are the perfect fit for Gold Beach. But right now, it's not an industry that people really want to come be part of, and that includes my involvement with the school. So school-level kids going into career fair opportunities and talking to us don't see it as a viable place of employment for them, not only in Gold Beach, but in any community. It's just not an interest right now. So it's not a square peg we're trying to pound to a round hole right now. But again, it goes back to, are we ready for anything? And my ears are constantly open to the right opportunity. And I promise if we get one, the city council's going to be the first ones to hear about it.
Thank you, sir.
For Chief White's budget, the police department starts at the bottom of page 24 and then goes up to the top of page 25. So if there's any questions, the, I didn't say this on Will's stuff, but the colas are proposed at 5%. And that was based on, go back to my notes, sorry. Okay, in a typical budget year, and this is on page seven of your budget, in a typical budget year, if a COLA is proposed for staff, it's based on the current year's social security COLA. Because of our local demographic, that's an easily defensible percentage. Last year, due to world events, we used a little bit different formula, but for 2022, the social security COLA was 5.9%. The PD union contract, they're the only union within the city departments. Of course, obviously, Chief White isn't part of the union. But the mayor suggested that because regardless of the COLA situation, the PD union, they always get a 5% increase, they get step increases, that the mayor suggested that we maybe propose a 5% just for everyone. And so for streets, the general fund, promo, water, sewer, all the funds that have employees, the personnel services costs that you see, that includes a 5% increase in wages. And like I said earlier, there wasn't a significant increase in medical and there was an increase in other insurance, but medical was not a significant increase this year, so I didn't change that at all.
I, myself personally, I think the 5% COLA is very reasonable across the board. I think treatment did 4.5% this year.
On the PD material and services budget, the, there wasn't a lot of change that the chief had proposed. Obviously, we increased fuel just because of the uncertainty of that. I'm hoping maybe that'll even out. Little bit more investigations, but nothing significant. There was a line item in this year's budget, and I thought that I had removed it last year, but I did remove it for this year. The very bottom line where it says Lexipol annual fee, all of that had been moved last year. Anything that related to IT, related to software, and to computers, that's all now in non-departmental, which is at the beginning of the general fund budget. And for whatever reason, that one line item escaped me last year. So I just, that's why that zeroed out this year, because that money is actually paid out of the IT line item in non-departmental.
And now it's just stuck here for a couple of years till it runs out?
Yeah, yeah, it has to stay there until it drops off after three years. Okay, and then if you don't have any additional questions for Chief White, I would say we should excuse him and let him go home because I'm sure he's going to get called back since you were listening to somebody at the hospital.
We just head straight there.
Yeah, yeah. Eat your food before you go.
All right, I got it. I, I did eat eggs from the, I got called out early this morning for a crazy person at the hospital. They were nice enough to say, have you eaten anything today? By the time I'd been there the third time this morning, I said, no. So they threw me some eggs in a leftover container and I thought, thank goodness. I sat down to eat them and got called, I was sitting there waiting to arrest a guy eats my cold eggs in the car.
You can even work out an agreement there. It's like, if we get called out during these hours and these hours, you must feed our officer.
They're being very helpful.
That or get one of those pizza warmer, you know, like the delivery.
Little others in the car. Yeah, and you can sneak your food in the car.
Well, protein drinks in the mini fridge. Are there any questions, folks, about anything that you see here?
Covered everything very thoroughly, thank you. Okay, thank you, Chief, very much.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, do you want to circle back to the pages for the general fund and just start going back through them?
Sure.
Okay, so the general fund pages start on page 22.
Can I just say thank you for pulling up the page numbers because it's kind of all over the place?
I know, and yeah, that's why a page number.
Is there any other narrative you wanted to mention before we go there?
Let me look there real quickly. Most of it's like, yeah, this is what this department does. I didn't do a lot of changes over the entire year. Streets we covered. When we get to the promo fund, Mayor, maybe we'll talk about the, we'll go back to the narrative on that. But let's go ahead and start with the, I didn't have anything extra on the narrative for the general fund. One of the things that I had planned, candid to do for you guys, and I made this up a note, was the non-departmental line item that I'm talking about, and this is on page 23. Non-departmental includes insurance, it includes PERS, UAL, which is the unfunded actuarial liability. That's funds that are not attributable to a department or a person, but funds, fees that PERS charges us because we're a PERS employer. The next line item, the 1040, 241, is IT, software, copiers, contracts. What I was going to do for you guys is just kind of give you a brief list of like, okay, what all is included in that line item? And so I'll give that to you for, with the stuff I'll send you with the changes. But basically, it's like our copier contracts, our software contracts, if we have to buy new equipment as far as computers, like I said, we haven't bought any computers this year, but if we have to buy equipment related to computers, peripherals, things like that.
That Lexipol also, Lexipol would also be taken on that.
Yeah, because that's a, that's a computer, it's accessed only by them, but it's a computer contract. So I try to put anything that's related to software, computing, anything, just all in one line item. That way, it gives us an easier way of like, okay, this is everything that we spend. And you can see that over the years, it goes up each year. And the reason for that is we've added more stuff to it, A. But B, because as things are moving to the cloud, which I personally like, because now like with Cassell, we moved to Cassell Cloud a couple of years ago. Cassell is the software that we use for payroll and GL and accounts payable and all that. We used to have to have it resident here on the server here in the back room. Well, when it would break down, it was a very specific type of equipment, it costs a lot of money, I had to drive it over to Medford, it was just a total pain. So when they started moving things to where it was cloud based, it's so much nicer because we don't have to have the hardware here. The only thing that we have to have here is just our computers. And as long as we have internet, we have access to the program. And the other side to it is the whole cybersecurity thing. That has gotten so crazy. And now with the war in Ukraine, it's gotten even worse because the Russians are just, it's just terrible. And we actually did last fiscal year experience a cyber attack here. Thankfully, our computer guy, the only thing we have resident here is email, we have a server in the back that's just email, which actually that's going to be going to the cloud shortly as well. But somebody did hack into our server. It wasn't from Russia, he said, he thought it was from China. But we actually had the FBI show up.
It was kind of cool.
They thought we didn't know. We already known and fixed it because they were coming here to let us know. And he was like, I'm, he was very impressed that not only did we already know that it had happened, but that we had fixed the problem. So he wanted to get in touch with our computer guy because we were one of the very few small cities that actually had known that we had experienced a attack. The guy that does our IT stuff, we've had him for a really long time. But anyway, all of those contracts cost money, you know, so.
Are you looking at a substantial cost for a new contract?
There, everything, the other part to that is like, and I'm sure you've experienced this date, everything's going to subscription. Where it used to be, we could buy Microsoft Office, use the hell out of it until it died and they no longer support that anymore. Like, no, they don't do that now. Now you got to buy yearly subscriptions. It's just like any way they can get money. And so we're finally to the point where all of our machines, the software on them, the operating systems, the Windows 10s are all far enough where they no longer will operate those old versions of Word and stuff. So it's forcing us to have to upgrade to the subscription service. Well, you know, they make it sound like it's all great, but now we pay a monthly fee instead of just buying it once and using it for 10 years till it dies, you know? So yes, I anticipate that will go up. The flip side is though, that they deal with the cybersecurity portion of it because it's resident on their servers.
I'm just looking at your four year cost has been under $100,000 going back as far as the records are showing here. And now you've increased that line item by $40,000, which is 50% increase year over year without having visibility on an existing contract or actual costs that are going up. That seems a little high.
And that was why I wanted to give you a breakdown of what comes out of that line item. And the, and I'll be real honest with you, the 140 was spaghetti on the wall because I do not know, because we don't have.
At least you admitted.
At least you admitted.
Well, yeah, because I don't know what the yearly licensing fee is going to be for this Microsoft 365 because it hasn't, it hasn't been live yet. So I don't know, is it going to be $5,000? I know how much it was to purchase, then they don't call it a license, they call it something else, to purchase the initial thing. That was $6,000. Okay, is it just, is it going to be $6,000 every year?
Well, promise me if it's not more than 120, you'll take that $20,000 and put it into police chief's pre-hire.
Or buy him a computer or something.
Well, and honestly, a lot of their tech comes out of this as well, and that changes.
And that is my question. I see where you're talking about putting all the tech together, but the tech term on the water bills is a lot different than the tech that they're using. So I don't fully understand why it would be all put into one budget and not reflected in each individual budget.
For me, and this is my explanation, is that, okay, so that we can, otherwise you would have to pick, go into everybody's line item and see how much they're paying. Where if we put it all here, I can pull up this GL item and it'll show me all of the vendors and what we paid it for. Where if it, the way we used to do things back in the day is that each department paid a certain portion of something, even if it really wasn't to them. But that, to me, is not very transparent. So it's like, if I want to know, how much is the city paying for IT services and software and things related to it? And on the non-departmental, when you go to that breakdown of like how each department is figured out what percentage they pay into that, a portion of that is paid from the general fund, because the PD is part of the general fund, but a large portion of like, say, the dispatch services. Well, the, our office in Public Works uses very little of dispatch, where they are like 98% of dispatch. So a goodly portion of that is coming from their budget to pay that. So I just think it makes it easier if you have one line item and then we can pull it up and you can see every expense that came out of there.
So then you can figure out percentage of what department costs for that one line item.
That's a good idea. And like I said, and that also includes contracts, like, you know, like that net asset sets, Mayor, the pay in for the lean searches and stuff, that comes out of it. It's like contracts that are monthly contracts for certain things, but are not for services like the water plant or something like that. They're not easily attributable to a particular thing.
What would the locate fees would be?
Locate fees, that comes out of Public Works because that's a contract service that like the city office, we don't do locates. Locates are for water and sewer. So that comes out of their department.
Yeah, you call 811, it's free, or the city gets a bill for it.
Yeah.
And they've been doing a lot.
We have to go locate it.
Everywhere you go, there's like painted stuff and the flag.
Project legis is because a lot.
So you're, to get back to my question, so you're saying that if we, they are going to prepare that breakdown of what it looks like, all those expenses for IT, what's what, and then you could pull it up with that breakdown and see, okay, so this is specifically the IT that's being used predominantly by this department or that department?
Yep. And we have, there's like three different IT costs. Two of them are from Kuzcuri Electric, and then one is from the guy that does our email server and then also the Office 365. But Kuzcuri does our IT for that side of the building because like going back to the beginning of time, we have this weird incestuous relationship with the dispatch, their system, and it can't be, it's just terrible. So because he does the IT for the sheriff's office, it just makes it easier for us to have him do that because we basically access the sheriff's office dispatch through a portal. But having somebody that doesn't really know, because they have this weird proprietary built for them system, so it's just easier to have the guy that works for Kuzcuri that contracts with the county to do our PD stuff.
Any other questions?
For the.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I think that would be for the next one. Was there any questions on page 22 which had to do with revenue?
I have a comment that I think it's time to renegotiate the Gold Beach Water and Fire contract. It's been the same for a very long time. Our costs keep going up and.
We actually, we, our contract with them expires, we just re-upped it in four years ago, and it did increase.
What are you referring to? I didn't hear that.
Sorry, 1032180. It's on page 22. It's the last of these permits.
Okay, our most recent contract we signed with them, and the rates increased then, was in. Started in 2018 and this current contract will end in 2025. And we have an annual fee they pay, and then they pay a lump sum amount towards capital.
And is that done in like two payments in the year?
Yeah.
So Gold Beach Water and Rural Fire District doesn't have their own service, they have always contracted with the city of Gold Beach. But they're pretty healthy tax base to do that. And so they just write us a check a couple of times a year and they provide some equipment. And so my suggestion is to raise that contract. And Jody's saying they've got a couple of years before they can do that.
Is there contingency there that says like, you know, if the cost for services and fuel exceeds a certain percentage that we can revisit that? Or are we stuck at that?
Oh, not really. I mean, that's.
Well, certainly any new contract, you'd have an annual escalator. Even rent anymore, you know, 5% a year is pretty standard.
You know, for example, they've spent the same in the years that we can see, and we've gone from 163,000 to 208,000. So that's a $45,000 increase, which is what percent? That's a lot.
And then.
And we're getting a lot of callouts.
Would that change at all, Mayor, if we look at the consolidation going through?
That's true. And maybe by the time that conversation finishes, we'll, our contract will be up and we can have another conversation. But if I didn't, if we don't mention it now, then she doesn't know when she goes and negotiates. Because for some reason, the council has completely given staff 100% negotiation power.
Oh, real?
I wouldn't say the council, it says, that's how the city code is written.
Which was written by the council.
Right. If you say for some reason, I mean, it's like that was written.
It used to be that way 25 years ago, but.
Well, I know she drives a hard bargain, so I kind of trust her.
Well, we never want to be unfriendly with other districts, but I, obviously, we've got numbers to show that.
What was the other line you were comparing it to?
The actual expense for the fire department, which is.
Page 25.
25 at the bottom.
So the personnel is 48, 375, and materials and services, which includes our, the volunteers get paid by contract, they're, they get like a stipend, that, that's 146,000. So the total amount for the, that we're proposing for the fire department this year is 208, 713.
Does that also take into consideration the small stipend they get per callout and a percentage increase there based on the cost of fuel so we don't lose?
Yeah, actually, we talked, Jody and I talked about that, and she's increasing it $5, assuming the budget committee agrees. That's line 1055, 215, is that correct?
Correct.
So she's raising it from 45,000 to 60,000.
And then back to the whatever, your suggestion was, Dave, with the new climate action. And then back to the whatever, because your suggestion was, Dave, when the new contract made to put an annual increase in?
Yes, and that's clear.
And you know what we could-
Every year it just goes up 5%.
Yeah, because their, their fees are based on, I mean, their revenue is based on the tax base, so it can be, you know, like we get like a 3% or 2% increase from the county each year on our taxes. Well, that's where they get their revenue from, is from taxes. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good idea, Dave.
I mean, well, they're obviously taking advantage of a contract that was made seven years ago. They have a couple of years to go where they haven't seen their costs go up at all. Who's in that, who has that opportunity in life?
The good news is they've saved a lot of money. They have a very large reserve fund. They're building a building and they're buying Class 6 fire engine, which does good for wildland fire, and it'll belong to the city of Gold Beach, but it'll be housed on Edson Creek. So, and they can pay cash for that because they've been saving money.
Well-
And the county, I think, is leasing them the ground for like a dollar a year.
And you wonder why they're-
They weren't using it anyway. And if, I think their rate is like $1.22 per thousand, and the city's is 2.33. So they do pretty well with this fire.
I'm just checking the battery.
Okay, so general fund income, you did really good on taxes, thank you Kylie. Kylie, over to the assessors' office.
Yeah, that's only through March. We still got a little more coming.
I do have a question under materials and services, city council, line 1041, 231.
Me too.
I noticed you doubled the amount of money for council travel. I was just curious, the IRS only raised the mileage rate by 2 cents a mile, so are you planning on driving-
We get 10 cents a mile.
What is, what are your thoughts there?
I actually suggested that. I'm encouraging, nobody's gone to any training the last two years, except for Zoom, for the most part. I made it to the mayor's conference last year, but-
Well, yeah, it looks like 18, 19 was the last year where that actually happened.
And so I'm going to encourage the council to go to the League of Bargain Cities in Bend, and I did some price checking, and the rates of motels has gone up quite a bit. And of course, gas is more, but the city gives you what, is it 10 cents?
10 cents a mile.
10 cents a mile, and they pay your gas. They don't even-
So the travel includes hotel?
It includes hotels and food. And, and we don't usually spend it all because not everybody will go.
So what I did was I budgeted, and on page 7, it says the mayor requested that the travel budget reflect in-person attendance for LOC conference, and travel includes gas and lodging, and those have increased. So what I did was I budgeted, if all five councillors went, that they would have a $1,500 budget each. And that's, that's how I arrived at the 7,500. In the past, we, not everyone has attended every year, just, you know, because everybody's got day jobs. But, but if everybody were being able to attend, LOC is usually in the fall, I think it's September. Did you say, Mayor, it's going to be in Bend this year?
It's in Bend, and it's in the middle of the week now. It used to be on the weekends. Now it's like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so it's like people have to take vacation to go.
Cheaper hotel on the other end when you're budgeting.
Yeah. Can we take a quick timeout, Mayor, so that Mr. King can change his battery?
Okay.
Good to go.
Okay.
I have a question on revenue, 1032, 145, the marijuana tax, same. That seems like a really conservative number. Is there a reason for that?
1032, 145?
Yeah, the pot tax.
I'm trying to think how much I'm allowed to say. The Department of Revenue collects the city's portion of the marijuana tax on our behalf and remits it to us. There has been a collection issue.
Oh.
And I don't know, I need to contact Department of Revenue and see how they follow up on enforcement.
Okay. So you expect a possible issue?
Yes.
That answers the question.
The city has to sign a confidentiality agreement that we can't talk about who and how and what, so.
Kind of the same with project tax.
Is that just a tax generated in the Gold Beach area specifically?
They collect, currently, we have two stores, Lamota and then the fish one.
Saka.
Thank you. Why is there a fish, you know? It says the friendly store in town, and then they have that horrible looking fish. So we have two stores, so they collect and remit the tax to us.
Do you put the state revenue in there as well?
No, that's a separate line item under-
Because that's supposed to be going down as well.
And that, I reflected that. Because we did get a letter this last, for the last quarter that we just got, they said that whatever the ORS, blah, 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 you know, now the number is going to start going down on our state portion. Not that the collections went down, but that the way the ORS changed, like more of the money is now going to like treatment or something, prevention or something like that. So we will see, you can see the last several years, it was like nine, 17, and 12. So far this year, it's been 2,800, and I believe that's just for two quarters.
Which line are you looking at?
This is 1033, 104, and I think the year-to-date, which is column 1, 2, 3, 4, it's at $2,800 right now. I'm pretty sure that's just for two quarters, so that's basically half a year. So if we keep going, that would mean that we would get roughly 6,000 for the year, so that's, that figure's already starting to be reduced for the state portion. And we knew that was coming.
Some cities were getting really big checks and they're very upset, just not on the mayor's terms. But we never got a ton, so it wasn't.
Well, I think the mistake that some cities make is that they really commit stuff to those dollars, and I try to make that as found money. It's like, oh, it's great if we get it and then we can use it for something, but don't like fund a police officer with it, you know? And I think that that's where the upset part comes from, is that they, they hard budget it for-
Not just dog year.
Thing, yeah. Because you never know with the state. I mean, they can change the rules at any time.
Why did we get so much money in 2021 for the TV tax?
That included, there was another, there was another vendor that was included in that because it was-
It was a huge amount.
What do you say? Internet. And I need to look that part of your actual, because I can't hardly believe that we brought in that much.
Yeah, it almost looks like a typo, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Unless it, maybe it was a part of two years, the way it came in.
Maybe.
Okay. Any other questions on revenue? Unless you've got it on the head.
1035, 150, the city mini portion.
Okay.
Why are we at half of what we budgeted? For year-to-date? Yeah. Because we're down an officer. Okay. And then with that, okay, okay. And I didn't propose any change for what we budgeted for this current year.
Do you think those flashing 30 mile an hour signs will bring that revenue down also?
You know, it'll, it'll be interesting to see. It'll be interesting to see because I know in the past, the people that argue with us, and they always get a letter from Jody if they write a letter. I didn't know, you didn't tell me, you didn't know. Well, I have a little map that shows you every 30 mile an hour sign you passed, and you passed four of them before you got your ticket, or you passed six of them before you got your ticket. So I'm actually waiting for the first person to write a letter so I can say, not only did you pass this many, but you passed a flashing one too.
That's holding your speed.
Okay, we're texting and didn't see that.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not their fault. That's what they always say. And then they end it with, and I'm never coming back here again. And it's like, well, if we gave you a speeding ticket for 45 miles an hour, you didn't stop here anyway. Laws of physics say you couldn't get to 45 if you left McCain.
It is interesting that people complain that you only look for California plates. And, and I've seen some of her letters before, and she's like, yes, usually it's out of town people, but it's the same number of Oregon plates as California or other plates. But locals tend to know not to speed here.
Yeah.
Because they know somebody's crossing the road, they know that there's a deer, they know where, you know, the dangers are.
Well, now I feel guilty coasting into town going north at 38. Because something's telling me I'm doing it.
I don't want that flashing sign though by my house when the construction's done and people start going back up to 45, going down that hill to the bridge.
And that's usually, as our former chief used to say, he would sit there where is what now the pot shop, but it used to be vacant, that he called it a target-rich environment. People would come flying around there, and, you know, then they'd see the four lanes and go, woo.
They're going-
Or same deal, they come over there.
They're coming down, and it goes two lanes to one lane, and they want to get ahead of that car in front of them. And that's the part.
Right, when you're trying to pull out of your road.
True.
Okay.
Another one I have is 1040, 262, on page 23, the audit services. Yes.
We don't need auditors, do we?
We haven't paid this year yet, that's why it's not showing. Okay. Yep, this is just, the column four is through March, and they, they just finished. So I haven't even got the, I haven't even got the invoice from them yet. I increased the phone and internet a little bit, well, quite a bit, this year because I anticipate that that cost is going to go up. I know that Zipli's going woo-hoo, everything's great, but I just have a feeling that costs are going to go up.
You never know, competition might go down.
Mine did, because I have the fiber, the first fiber, it went down.
Nowadays, though, they suck you in, and then the next year, then all of a sudden it's-
Well, it's different with the municipality with customers. You just call and say, hey, they offered me a deal, I want to transfer, then they rewire your bill. So I don't know that you can plow it down.
Okay, any other questions there? Okay, so page 24, this is a front office and a portion of the police department, which we already looked at. I don't think the, the personnel services is up a little bit, and a reason for that, 1043, 118. I do have a part-time person that's going to be working for us till the end of the year. So for the fiscal year, it'll be June, and she may even be leaving sooner than that. Lindsay, who was the community coordinator for Gold Beach Main Street, she was housed here in our building the whole time. And she also did work for us, especially during COVID, and so she's going to be leaving towards the end of the year. And I said, well, as long as you stay, I want you to work here because she's been a really great asset to our department, and so she's been doing some small projects for me. And I'll be sorry to see her go, but that, that person probably won't be in the budget next year.
You mean 23?
1043, 118, that, that, I doubt that I will have that part-time person next year.
For the 23, 24 year?
Yeah, correct. Sorry.
You don't anticipate leading to fill that position?
Honestly, it, because Lindsay had worked for us already, and she was already familiar with our software and everything, because she was planning on staying such a short amount of time here in the community, it's like, okay, I have work for you and I have things that I could have you do. So it was more or less really that a position was created for her. And, you know, maybe next year we'll see how things go, but I have her working, like I said, more on projects. Just things that I would love to do and don't have the time to get to, or, you know, she does really amazing things, but she's going to be leaving.
When did you say she was leaving?
I, she is going to the Antarctic, and I want to say that she's leaving in October.
Okay.
Yeah, she's-
So this budget item basically reflects half of this?
Yeah, I put it to December, but it may be even a little bit less than now. And her position doesn't affect any of the, like, medical insurance and stuff. If I did, it does, but not the other stuff. But yeah, she needs to spread her little wings, and she's already been to Africa, so now she's going to have her-
Okay, I'm ready to move to 25. Ready to do part of it.
Do we have a comments on, huh?
All right?
The screen.
Nope, nope. Let's see, it was on there.
Public hearing's not until number eight. We do have to get that, to that tonight, by the way.
Yeah, if we, yeah.
So if we're not going to finish tonight, make sure we, we move on to that public hearing. Actually, it just says dispatch, it doesn't say a public hearing.
The public hearing comes up the, you guys have to approve it, but it comes up the-
My comment.
Thank you. I have a, I have a medical condition that makes me lose my words.
A chance with yourself.
I know, so, and then when I get nervous, it makes it even worse. So it's like, so if it looks like, it's like, like, are you being dumb?
It's called city budgetitis.
Okay, the comment is, the budget mentions a 5% COLA proposed by the mayor for all employees. I'm glad to see that we are ensuring that compensation for our public services is being maintained at the best rate possible. That said, I see that, I see there's some adjustments in the 8% to 11% range as I see no discernible restructuring has occurred.
Do we want to address, do we want to address this right now or hold it for the public comment time?
That's up to the mayor.
Well, we'll read it now, so.
I can wait till, of course, have a bit of a cold starting.
So the question was that it doesn't appear to be a 5% across-the-board increase, it looks different? And I think that's probably because you have restructured, you hired a planner recently, correct?
Yes, and that was a- That was an entirely new position with a different-
But it falls under, falls, it falls under a similar line item?
Yeah.
You did redo it last year, correct?
The-
You created the month position and-
Yes, correct.
You tend to do it just every year, if I recall correctly, somewhere.
Pardon me?
It seems to me that almost every year when there's a change, you readjust duties and job descriptions and-
Correct.
This work, this didn't, let me adjust it to here, I think you say.
And just for those of you, for the newer people, for the city management office, I'm also the supervisor over the city management, so I'm like administrative services director. So the people in there are my personal staff. So.
It do look more like 10%.
Well, I don't know exactly what he's talking about, but people get steps as well as the COLA, right? So I mean, isn't that part of it?
It could be, probably what happened was when I was looking at this, if a step increase was less than the 5%, I would just go with the 5%, but if a step increase was equal to 5%, so I don't, I don't believe that people got more than, I'll do the math again, but, I mean, I have a spreadsheet that does it, and I can say times .05, you know?
Well, I was knowing earlier, at that 5%, that's just going to get eaten up so fast. So while it looks kind and generous, it's not going to feel like a lot to the employees as the year progresses.
Well, and I would say, you know, it just- Well, and I would say, it, you know, just speaking for myself, and I know everybody feels that, we all feel it in all of our jobs, that, you know, things are costing more money and, and then Mr. Gilbert, I know you say the fixed income. And, and for those of us that are government employees, we're, I've always been on a fixed income. My budget gets set, I don't get raises during the year. Times that I worked at the county, there were many years that we didn't even get COLA increases. So unless you're in the private sector, there's no such thing as not being on a fixed income. If you work for government, we're on a fixed income. I don't know how it works at the school district, but we, it's like, that's the number that we get and that's, that's what we get. So, so I, as a government employee, I've always been on a fixed income. There wasn't, like, we don't get bonuses and, you know, things like that. And I, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, it's just there's, everybody chooses their jobs. But, but being a government employee, we're on a fixed income as well. But for us, we have to contribute a portion of our medical insurance costs. The city pays 100% of the employee, but if we have our kids or our family on it, we have to pay a portion of that. And that's fair, we should. But in, at least for me, over all of the years when I had my family, and now it's just me and my spouse, the increase in the insurance premium usually either was equal to or greater than whatever my step increase or COLA I might have gotten. So. You know, and then just, you know, the price of gas and other stuff too. So I, I would agree with the mayor, and I think it was reasonable to do the 5%.
And your line item didn't go up 5%.
Mine is by contract.
Is it still in that contract amount that Councilor Campbell negotiated with you?
Yep.
You got the shirt under the stick.
Going to get the joy of working with all of you guys.
Sending these packets at midnight. Okay.
So Jody, you are, you are administrator. So you are going to double-check those numbers to address that question and concern?
Yep, like I said, I'm fairly certain, because my spreadsheet does the math for me, but I will certainly.
Yeah, some of them are 11%, some are 8. If they are, they're not exactly 5, not even close. But as, as Barryman said, it has a lot to do with other things.
Except, yeah.
Well, except that he said that if it was a step increase, you didn't add a step increase and a COLA.
It was either or.
It was either or.
So if you got like a, because stepping, other than the police department, step increases are not automatic. Those are, those are by merit. So typically what I'll do in a year, in my department, I don't know how Will does for his department, but if I feel somebody deserves a merit increase, then I will, I will factor that in. But you don't get the merit increase and a COLA at the same time, it's either or, so.
Is it anniversary date or hire date, or? How do you, or you just decide, you just can decide whenever, or is it come up once a year?
Once a year, yeah.
Would you do that at budget time, or budget?
New year. As far as deciding whether somebody gets a merit raise?
Is that when the raises happen, is it the beginning of the fiscal year?
For them it does. The PD on, on the first pay period in July is when merit, when their union step increases go in. For me, if I think that I will budget for somebody to have an increase, I'll, I'll budget the money for it. And then when we do the evaluation, it's at the time of the evaluation, for my department. I don't know how Will does it. Over on page 57. The Assistant Public Works Superintendent and Public Works Superintendent. Oh, you know.
Okay, one I invited, sorry, what page? Oh, you meant page 25.
Yeah, I was noticing.
25? No, she's on 57.
No, it's because I'm on, no, I'm on 57. I was looking at Assistant PW Superintendent versus the Public Works Superintendent. But now I see there's hourly versus salary, so.
Never mind.
Yes. I hadn't noticed that before. And Will's salary, and usually I put half on there, but he's paid half out of each fund. Ron, who is the Assistant Public Works Superintendent, is paid completely out of sewer, because he's our sewer operator. Okay, so page 25, that would be, we looked at the PD Fire Department. I know that I had said previously, but I will repeat it, 1055-215, which is the Fire Volunteer Association. We increased, they get, they get a flat fee for drills, which are the Monday night practice, and then they get a flat fee for calls. And they keep a, they keep a running log of each of the firefighters and who shows up for what event. And then every quarter, the, they bring that to the front office and then we pay them for the previous quarter. So I call it their call-out money. So the mayor had asked me to look at, when was the last time we had increased the, the call-out, the practice and call-out fees, and it had been since 2011, I believe?
12.
12. So I did propose an increase in the stipend, the call-out fees.
I was amazed, I did the, I tried to sign all the checks. And then we signed a check to the association, and then the association picks checks to them. I believe that's how we do it. And the number of call-outs, some of them did in a quarter, was over 100. It's just amazing to me how dedicated they are. Some of them only did like 30 or 40, but I just, it's just still a very dedicated group of individuals.
How many individuals are participating?
There's 23 or 24 volunteers.
And they actually get more for showing up for practice, because that's just four times a month. But they, there's more incentive, they get a little bit more money to show up for practice as incentive to show up for training. Okay, any other questions on page 25?
Do you know when they have to replace those SBAs again?
Probably about the time we paid these off.
That's what I was afraid of.
The line item, Counselor Skinner, towards the bottom of the page, 1055-710 SCBA, that's the, that's an acronym for breathing apparatus, something, something breathing apparatus. We, and this was, Commissioner Sanders was the one that suggested it. The, the chief, they needed new equipment because they're only good, even if like they've never been used, the way, it's sort of like what Chief White was saying, that certain equipment has to be, you can't use it anymore. Even if it's like in, like, like new condition, it's only good for X amount of time and then it has to be replaced. Well, almost all of their equipment, the SCBA equipment was at that point. And so I want to say they're good for 10 years, that's what I want to say off the top of my head. But they are quite expensive. And so the sewer reserve loan money to the fire department to just purchase all brand-new ones. And that's what that loan payment's for. So probably about the time we get that payment off, it'll, it'll be time to buy all new ones again.
Yes, but they'll have good equipment.
Yeah.
One thing, yes, I'm really good about Chief Kiger is you really watch those expiration dates and make, make sure that they have safe equipment.
So then in future budgets, is that something we're looking to account for? So those loans don't have to be made, so would that be?
Either or. I mean, e- even if we like started putting away that much money. But I'll talk to him for next budget year and ask, like, when, when are they coming up where they're going to have to be replaced again?
Yeah, you could make a reserve loan for that.
Yeah.
What is the interest rate we're charging on that?
We're charging ourselves, I believe, 3%. And the reason for that was the savings that we got in the bank on our, on what we have in savings right now is just, it's like .019% and we were getting like hideous returns on our money in the bank. So that's why, you know, it sounds like, why do we have all these loans? And it's like, because we're trying to make interest.
It's profitable, right?
Yeah, really, that's it.
You know, you just take it out of one pocket and put the other, or else.
Yeah, but at least taking it out of one ear to the other, we're making money on it, you know?
They don't actually bake anything, they just make money out of thin air.
It's interesting, it was at Rotary with Chief Kiger yesterday, and he said he had a $70,000 budget that he can work with. And I don't think he realizes he has a $200,000 budget, because he doesn't see all the other expenses. He just sees the party getting used to every equipment.
The pancake feed fundraiser, where does the expenses come out of and where does that revenue?
It shows up in their own account, we don't know about it.
Oh, okay.
Right? The pancake breakfast.
Yeah, that, that goes into, they, they have their own, it's called the social, the social fund or the social club, which that's not a, a thing of the city. And evidently, the auditors are aware of it, have been forever. Evidently, that's a thing of volunteer fire departments, and the auditors basically go la-la-la, don't run it through your books, we don't want to know. Not that they think there's anything wrong, but it's just like, it's not city money. So whenever they do a fundraiser, that goes into their, their social fund.
Come to our pancake feed, we'll come to your fire.
That's right. Maybe this year, hopefully this year, we'll be able to have a, have a breakfast this year.
Yeah.
Be nice.
Fifty years now. Okay, so good on the general fund? Okay, so then we did street fund, water fund.
So you're actually losing money in the general fund, but when you put in your beginning fund balance, it should be okay?
Yes. And that's the other, one of the other things that I give you is the spreadsheet that balances. Okay, so mayor, we're now to the Community Promotion Fund. Did you want to talk about?
Page 7.
The, the line items are page 33. The narrative.
Well, I'm talking to somebody, and I'm not going to call them by name, because I don't think they want to be called out. And they were saying that there may be some moves to change their room tax from another entity. So we may want to talk about doing that for ourselves and setting that aside like we normally do. And so I, I brought it up with Administrator Fritz, and the number that came up was 10%. And she thought, that's too much all at once, so let's talk to the Budget Committee about a 1% change and see where the conversation goes. So there's, there's two things that happens if we do that. One, the revenue 20% goes to the general fund and 75 goes in the promo?
Yeah, the breakdown is, is 75 cents of each dollar goes to the promo fund, 20 cents goes to the general fund, 5 cents is retained by the operators as, you know.
Collectors.
Yeah, as your trouble for collecting, so.
So I've written the narrative that the percentage increase, what year did that happen? And from what percentage?
In 2015, we increased it from 6 to 7.
Okay.
And then the mayor was proposing doing a 1% increase this year, but specifically for, not for marketing, but more for like hard costs for like facilities. And then also, I was talking to her about the destination development thing, because she was saying, you know, well, maybe we can give out more grants. And it's like, okay, well, the big thing that Travel Oregon is, is pushing these days is, is not so much events, it's, it's more developing products.
Yes.
How can we help trails? How can we do water trails? How can we do interpretive trails, you know? So, so what I proposed on.
Boardwalk.
Pardon?
Mr. Rad, Counselor Bradley?
Yeah.
Are you here, yes?
I was at Seaside two weekends ago, and their boardwalk is phenomenal on the beach.
So on page. Page 33, I broke it out to actually have its own tax line item. So it would be the 2432-140 is just our, our normal 6% room tax. Because the 1% that we increased several years ago, actually, we put that into a separate fund for the Event Center on the Beach Maintenance Fund. But this 1% would be, have its own line item, and I called it Destination Development slash Facilities. And so then the, the line item down below in the expenditure says the same thing. So then people, and I envision it like, it, there's not a lot of money. I, I based it on, I went back the last five years, because the last two years are like flipping insane on what the taxable rent was, you know? If I'd known that I just had to tell people to stay the hell home for the last 30 years to get them to come here, I, I would have done that. Because the last two years of our room tax has just been insane. So I didn't want to use that as the comparator, so I went back five years. And so then I did an average of, okay, what was, and when I say taxable rent, there's gross rent, and then there are certain deductions that the operators can take for specific purposes, like if it's a, a monthly rental, or it's a government employee that's here on a business or whatever. And so what's left over after those deductions is what we call the taxable rent. So that's the amount of money that the lodging tax is collected on. So our taxable rent, I went back and figured it. And so based on that figure, I came up with that it looks like the new 1% that we're proposing, that $70,000 is probably a pretty okay number, not real high, not real low. It could come in even a little bit higher, but I wanted to not be too, I wanted to be a little bit conservative. So I think this, the $70,000 is a conservative figure. And then put a corresponding expenditure line item down below. And I think that, and the way that the lodging tax is, the way it's written is that the city administrator is the one that administers the funds. But I think that on this particular one, that I would kind of like it to be like the Event Center on the Beach, where I think that, that people that want to propose a destination development or a tourist facility project, because these are hard projects, that I think maybe I do want them to go to the council and ask for that money. The other stuff, you know, the day-to-day stuff that we do normally, events, things like that, I'm okay with. But I don't want to be the one to decide whether somebody gets to build their bike trail or not. I would prefer that to be spread out.
Well, would it be better to save that money, because we've got a parking lot that needs to be replaced and?
I did put, like I said, we were going to bring in 70 in revenue, and so the expenditure I put at 60, and then I, I put, increased the building, building grounds, I think, or maybe the, the pass-through. But I didn't show the whole $70,000 being spent.
I was listing it out on the actual line at 60, and you said you think, where did the other 10 go?
I don't know if I budgeted for it, but we have a transfer going out to the visitor center in South Beach Park, building maintenance, which includes like the, the parking lot and stuff.
So I'm, I'm just confused on the process here. So the 1% proposed increase, is that something that you have already decided or the council already decided? Or is this the Budget Committee is saying yes or no now? I mean, is it something we get sayin' or not? Procedure-wise?
Yeah.
The council hasn't voted on it, so I'm pretty sure they want your input.
Input, but then it's a council decision.
I think technically it is, isn't it?
Yeah, because it would be changing our, our lodging tax ordinance. But I think what the mayor wanted is, she wanted me to present it to you as the Budget Committee and say, okay, is this something that you're even interested in? Because if the answer's no, then we don't need to ask the council to change the lodging tax ordinance.
I can't imagine the council going against the Budget Committee. You're, you're a very good Budget Committee.
I have a question, this case, this might sound kind of stupid. At what point does it have to go to voters versus just the board?
Okay, lodging tax, it doesn't have to, because, because it's a tax not on our citizens. It's a, like a convenience tax.
Right.
Now, the gas tax, that had to go to our voters.
Right, and it keeps getting, no.
Yeah. But the lodging tax is something that the council can do. Now, it can, the council can elect to refer it, but typically, if it's not a, a fee that's going to be assessed on the local citizens, the council takes care of it. So unless you're staying in a motel here in town, you're not paying.
Okay, so then that kind of, this is going backwards, but so there's like kind of another question. Then like, I know it's a utility bill and it's raised, how come that doesn't have to go to the voters?
Because that's a fee, it's not a tax. Now, other cities.
Right, but we needed the money, so we upped the bill, is the way I kind of thought. And so the people don't get a say in that, it's just like, we need this money to cover the budget, so we're going to raise your utility.
Banden's charter has that, and they almost had to close down their utilities because of it. Because they also provide electricity.
Yeah.
And so they actually at one point recalled their entire council and mayor, because they were mad about it. And so they actually at one point recalled their entire council and mayor, because they were mad about it. And then they had to do a special election to get it passed.
But we know the history of tax levies in current counties.
Well, right, and that's why I'm used to, and I want to make, I want to put it out there on the record that I am very pro getting the employees, the colas. I mean, I'm in their safe position. It's just, I'm used to being at the county where I have to fight for every dollar. And you take it to the citizens, and you're told no. And then, this is new for me, being at a city level. Where it's just like, if you need the money, you can make rate increases to get the money. So I just, I'm just trying to.
Correct.
Ask questions and.
For the enterprise funds, is what they call them, for the water and sewer.
Okay.
They don't make money, but they're supposed to break even. And so that's water and sewer. And for some reason, the state allows us to add a fee for like the streets.
Okay.
Which we did after trying to get a gas tax and missed.
Well, it's not, the state, it wasn't a matter of allowing it, it was that we have, we, we started a new reserve fund. Now, I will say like fees, like for, like what the, the clerks charge to record, what the building department charges for, that just goes to the commissioners. That doesn't go to the voters.
True.
Right, I get, I get to see the fee schedules and stuff, they ask if you want to make changes, yeah.
So that's basically the same thing here. But a tax, if it was something that we, like I said, the gas tax would be something that would go to voters.
Yes, but the state tells you what you can spend that lodging tax on.
Correct, yes, there are.
So it has to be specifically, it can't go to raises or new cars or any of that stuff? It has to be specific to tourism-related?
What page for the visitor center stuff?
Well, a certain percentage, right?
Yeah, the 70. At least 70%, for us, we do 75%. But at least 70% by statute has to be spent on tourism and tourism-related facilities. It can be promotion and marketing. It can be the running of the visitor center. That's part of what that money comes out of, marketing and promotion. So like when you see Goldie and you see the ads on TV, that's where the money comes from. And then it can also go to debt service. So like, say, we purchased a new building and we built something, we can use that money for debt service. But we can't use it, like Dave was saying, to buy a car or do whatever. Now, the 20 cents can go into any other fund we want it to. And typically, it goes into the general fund. That's one of the revenue line items. But it cannot be any more than 20 cents. If the dollar can go to the general fund. 70, at least 70 cents has to go to just for tourism promotion.
With the new focus on.
Does that hold?
Yeah.
Good questions.
With your question, tying on the voters or the gas to the community, the tourists. With the new hard projects focus, the local people are actually benefiting long-term from these dollars coming in on the tax. Because if we're building board blocks or trails or doing any of that, it's going to be available to residents every day of their year.
Yep.
All right, cool.
Plus, it's another reason for people to come and visit. Because, you know, the new, the new bike trail.
Oh, yeah, definitely a tourist thing coming in.
Right.
But benefiting the taxpayers here.
Joey, are you seeing the lodging tax revenues starting to increase year over year? I mean, have they started to rebound?
Since COVID started, it's been crazy. And so far, I keep, I know, I know there's going to be a bottoming out at some point. There's, there's got to be. And so far, we are, as of May of 2020 to, yeah, May. Because in March is when we were all, thought it was all going to go away after a month, ha ha. So here we are in May of 2022. And not only has it not gone down, in some months it has gone up. And it has just been insane.
I really, yeah, I, I mean, I was surprised. But I love going by the beach and seeing tons of people out there. We never used to have people by Kissinger Rock and stuff. I mean, there was, it used to be like two people.
By the time I get to Brooklyn, I'm having a disease fit. Oh my God, there's so many people in the pullouts.
I think it's great to see so many people that, and yeah, it was when, like you said, even at the time when you were saying, don't come, we don't want anybody else, it's COVID.
Yeah.
And it started traveling with their germs. And the whole point of the record, they just.
They were all over the place.
Keep it to themselves.
But they found that small places were fun to go to and safer.
And outdoors, activity.
Outdoor activities and.
River.
Okay, clearly, I can see I'm the only one that has to medicate themselves when they drive to the.
No, no, that is not for our police chief, but with the county, that safety factor, which would affect the hospital in our district, that safety factor on 101 on this pullout, especially Secret Beach.
Oh, yeah.
I.
Not so secret, huh?
It worries me, the safety factor on that. But that's not for this meeting.
So what do you guys think of the, the increase?
I love it. And, you know, I, I mean, sorry, but I, I do love it. To the point where I, I think we could, if we, if we build a solid case, I see no qualms with the voters voting 2%. Also, with the investment of destination development, that's supporting the workforce too. You know, OSU's got the work programs going, and you really need to get that going. And so ACHA's got the trail systems in line with rolling out that, that work. But it's sustainable, it's clean, and it's really looking forward.
An investment to the community. But I don't think we have to take it to the voters, correct?
No. We can, if you guys decide that you want to approve this in the budget, then what we would do at the, at the June or July council meeting is propose to amend, just like we did like for the event center on the beach, where we would amend our lodging tax ordinance. And, and then that's it?
Yeah, I'm happy with that one. I think it's a good idea. Serve his community well. Sorry.
You've been pushing for that boardwalk? Walkway, bikeway, I think you call it.
Yeah, I'll make sure it's big enough that we also get the fire truck down there too. Big whatever, bikes and fire by Ireland again.
Yeah, the more traffic, the less fires, eh?
Actually, the boardwalk could be a fire break.
No, because I don't know if you were at the meeting, I had the idea of going, continuing the Portside idea, getting up to airport and go from the end of Fifth Street all the way down to the visitor center with the seven-foot white path for bikes, pedestrians, following vegetation.
I'll support that, sign me up.
Yeah, I wonder if you get a piece of the paper portion.
Well, I would not go on.
Follow the vegetation line, and also, they'll probably help us with getting permission of the property owners to use it. Because then we end up doing the surveying, and they know what they can develop and what they can't. Since they can't develop less than the vegetation line, our pathway is right down the vegetation line. They know what part of that land they can use. And they can develop accordingly to try to generate revenue off the walkway.
Have little kids eliminate stands. I'm just thinking about.
I'm going to speak up a little bit and make sure I can hear us. Sorry.
Oh, I'm just thinking, but what happens in the winter? Do we pull it up before the storms come and the high tides come?
It'll probably pavement.
Yeah. Or. Also had, also had some ideas, having a handicap accessibility though. With a roll-up boardwalk that would go, that might have probably followed the boats with the jerrys. So when jerry's open, we'd have staff roll these walkways out, the handicap, that wheelchairs could use. And when boat season is done, we roll them up, we storm them.
Well, at Seaside, all the streets actually terminate right at the boardwalk. And in fact, one, you can turn around on the boardwalk.
This is something I have an idea of discussing with the citizen, you know, how, because if someone in a wheelchair goes down the South Beach, the trail down there can be rutted. If we had a lattice-type pathway that goes from there that goes out seasonally, someone in a wheelchair can actually get out there past the beach grass. They may not be able to go out on, on the descent itself, but they can get the feel of the salt air in their face and participate in that activity while they travel with their family.
Now, I, I support it. I think it's important that we continue to improve the activities here and the community involvement and make Gold Beach a destination.
Do we need to make a motion? Or will the motion be included with whatever we accept the budget?
You can do it either way.
As amended.
I was just kind of doing a round robin, seeing if everybody's in favor.
Yeah, if you approve, if you make, if you make the recommendation that the council approve the budget, that would be part of it.
Have you decided yet, Councilor Skinner?
Um, well, I just was going to ask one more question for you guys. So why 1%? Why not 1.2 or?
I, I think no more than three, because we don't want to go over 10, right?
So what are we at currently?
Right now, we're at 7. 6 is for us, 1 is for the Event Center on the Beach Maintenance Fund. So right now, we're at 7. So if we raise this by 1, then our, our city lodging tax would be a total of 8%.
And for the record, I am the only person I know that will actually stay in a different place because it's got a cheaper tax.
Yeah, because I have that argument.
I was wondering who that person was. I was just actually having that discussion, like who looks at what the tax.
Only me.
And I have had that argument with her in the past.
That's funny.
All the rest of us just say, I'm staying there. And Tammy's like, well, did you look how much the tax was? It's like, okay, but I'm not going to drive 20 miles to not pay 2%.
Not now with the gas prices.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I have a hybrid. Anyway, you need to.
Thank you. Now, you had a follow?
I was just going to say, I'd prefer to see us go 2 before the county comes in and let them pull the double-digit number. I would prefer to see 2 while we've got this onslaught of money. We're going to take complete advantage of those visitors while we can. Because like you said, it will bottom out at some point.
Yeah, at some point, it's going to bottom out.
So that way, collect as much as we can. And then when the cost of everything goes down to build it all, we've got all that money that we.
I believe the only caveat to that that I can see is that if you get that tax up a little bit high, then your tourists are going to say, I'm not staying in Gold Beach, it costs too much.
Yeah, no, everyone around me has more than us.
Except for me, a cropper, it doesn't happen.
Yeah. No, in, in most of the places around us, like you go up north, Seaside, Lincoln City.
Like 14%.
Yeah, we're wearing sort of.
They're out wet.
Like 14%.
And you can tell they've invested it back in.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, and, and as Councilor Madison said, she's the only one that's not.
Well, I, I would have to say I'm good with the 1%. I, I don't think pushing it 2% all at one time is a great idea. I just don't like, I don't like taxes. I mean, I just don't like it. And you can say it's hidden, you can say everybody else has more, you can say whatever. But, I mean, you don't have, you have an ideas for this, but you don't have anything you have to do with this money. It's not like you have a plan in place that's ready to go. And it's just like gas taxes that you kept fighting for. And now Curry County has the highest toxin Oregon on gas. And none of that's the city. But if you had city tax on that, it would be even worse.
If I may counter with that, is that it's an investment in our community that the visitors now would be paying for future visitors.
Yeah, this isn't a tax, this one, this is not a tax on us.
But it's a tax. We all pay tax. I mean, you know, to me, it's, it, it doesn't matter that I personally am not paying it. But yeah, if my relatives come into town and have to stay at a motel, then they're going to pay it, aren't they? You know, and my friends that come, if they have to stay at a motel, it's, it's just a tax. And I'm just saying, my personal opinion is 1% increase at a time is enough. I think 2 is a lot, percentage-wise, that.
Would you be more comfortable if there was a plan before the council voted on it? If there was actually some sort of plan?
Yeah, but that's not going to happen before this budget.
I'm looking at urban renewalizing all kinds of plans.
Well, we have a $250,000 parking lot, I think. Well, it's not here anywhere, but I'm pretty sure that's what it's going to cost to pay it. But, you know, maybe we won't completely pay it, maybe we'll do something different. Something maybe not so pervious, impervious, impervious. We have not heard from Kylie?
I can't come from the tax office. I don't know. It's not on the locals, it doesn't bother me that much, to be quite honest. I prefer 1 over 2, but 2's not that big of a deal, because we're not paying it. But like Candy said, relatives would pay it, other people wouldn't pay it.
So there's a conversation at the county during the overlay on the cities for TLT. And so that's how this conversation came up.
She just revealed herself.
I am that person. So in, you know, full transparency, because we all kind of have these conversations before it just gets dropped on us.
Can they do that legally? I'm going to have to talk to our attorney about that one.
Yes, so, I mean, I didn't encourage it, but. So my conversation was, look, you know, this is conversation, strike well the errant spot. If, if that's going to raise regardless, do we want to see that money stay here? Or do we want to see it here, right? And it will make a greater impact. It's going to be collected regardless. And we'd make a better, greater impact with smaller area areas. Not that Morana doesn't do a fantastic job and we agree with those funds. But I'm here for city business, so.
Which does help county business. Cities within county, so if people are coming here for the projects we develop as a city, going to benefit the county.
It's a catalyst, so.
Your comment was on the urban renewal.
Yeah.
I would say one thing, though.
County.
Is that the county's budget is not balanced. It's $2.5 million in the hole. We have the benefit of great stewardship here, and that's not the problem with the city. So, you know, I'm more comfortable with the 1%. And you know what, if the county throws 2% on top of it, I'm okay with that too, because they need the money. I need to support the sheriff and everything else.
Just can't go to the sheriff. It has to go to tourism.
Well, for the, for the county's TLT, the sheriff gets 95% of the 30% for patrol. So he's, he's pulling about $400,000 a year.
So they're proposing a 10% lodging tax for the county? And then.
It's budget season, so they're trying to turn over every stone they can.
Okay. Okay.
At which point, we've discussed, you know, handing off the collection to the state, like the city recently.
Yeah.
Yeah, those vacation rooms, bookings are hard to fight with.
Now, I'm dying, my, my.
Ms. Vera, I don't think you've chimed in on the 1% or 2% are a good idea either, yeah?
Me personally, I've never been a fan of nickel and dime. So if we want, you know, if we're looking even in the near future, where we would want 2% for this fund or this line item, then I say, let's do it now. Instead of we inch a little bit today and inch a little bit more tomorrow, that, that usually leaves a bad taste in my mouth. So for me personally, I would be for the 2%.
But you'll, and you like the idea?
Yeah.
So how do we get to, why don't you put up a 1 or a 2?
Okay, what about if he's saying 1.5?
Okay, we're negotiating.
I'm on the lines with, with our budget administrator. We seem to be split 50/50 between 1 and 2. Why don't we negotiate to 1.5?
Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, like the states is 1.2. It doesn't have to be even, an even amount. It's just easier on. Like, like would that bring the 2s down and the 1s up?
Well, I'm curious to come back to the, to the planet. Like you asked, like what would the money be used for? And you mentioned a parking lot, and you were looking at our urban renewal goal budget, and our goals here on the council goals. So I'm kind of feeling like 1.5 might be what you were saying. Are we really going to end up moving it to 2? And should we just start there? I'm not sure. But I'd be curious to hear more about how the money might spend. And are we working for a decision on that tonight?
No.
No, we're just taking input tonight.
If you break through the polls and objectives, you'll see, eight, seven, number.
So.
And then the parking lot.
So I think the consensus is yes, from the Budget Committee. But what the number actually is, we're a little on the fence either way.
So do you want to poll?
Yeah, and then I did want to mention too, that the percentage that goes into the development facilities and taking care of facilities is one part. The other part is that almost all of our general fund goes to the police department and the fire department. So the piece that we get into our general fund is going to help with their wages and their equipment. Because we have no way to raise our taxes. And as you know, our property tax is fixed, and it's fixed forever, so.
Mayor, long-term, it could afford us a little time perks person. You know, there will be a point where we plateau and we're not developing and investing to the extent we need to initially. And we can always lower the tax too, right?
That's what the state's saying.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
That is quaint.
Yeah, they did when, and of course, then COVID hit. Because the year, the two years prior to when they were going to have the Olympic trials up in Eugene, the room tax for the state was 1.8. And then after, I think it was last year, it went back down to 1.2.
But now they're going to have the big championships.
Yeah. It ended up where they didn't have it because of COVID and everything. Okay, so. so I don't believe you'll ever put it back down, though.
So we're almost to nine o'clock. You guys wanna go ahead and reschedule this? The original date, we thought, was the 10th?
How much more?
Or do you want to try to finish it tonight?
Where are we at? People who have done this before.
I think we just pretty much have the reserve funds left.
I think we're almost there. I really do.
So on the promo.
Do you want me to just go with 1%?
Well, wouldn't, the councils are the ones that will.
Right, but I'm gonna have to change the budget figures. That's why I need to know. So do you want, do you want to go 1, 1.5, 2? What do you want to do?
I don't know, just take.
Why don't somebody make a motion, and then we'll see if it passes?
I make a motion that we add an additional 2% to the lodging tax for the purpose of developing an infrastructure for visitors.
I'll second that.
For clarity.
Sorry? Oh, sorry.
Councilor Madison, so for clarity, where it says 1%, you would change it to 2%?
Correct.
Not to 3?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All right. We'll call the question. Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Councilor Radley?
Aye.
Councilor Skinner?
Aye.
Councilor McGivory?
Aye.
Ms. Vera?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
And Ms. Perrin?
Aye.
Oh, my gosh. That's amazing.
Well, I don't see that. I would call you first. I was on.
I did not expect that. You guys are awesome.
Discussion, and it was at some point brought up that I hadn't thought of, so that's why we have discussions.
I just get to keep bragging about this committee. We have a great council, great budget committee. I'm a little weak on the planning commission, because they keep dropping off.
Okay, so the, succumbent to the city council.
One move down a panel.
Okay, so page 35 is the event center on the beach. That's where the other 1% of our current 7% goes? Dave, I'm sorry.
Well, we left off on promotion when we started talking about this. And I had a question about 2440 to 21 on page 33, where you doubled the TV ad spend from 20,000 to 40,000.
And the reason for that is during COVID, we didn't do any TV ads at all.
But I understand.
And I suspect, like I was saying, that at some point, stuff's gonna bottom out. And I think we are gonna have to start advertising again. We're doing a little bit of advertising, but, and that's, again, that's a figure I threw out there. So you guys are certainly welcome to change those figures. But I figure probably at some point, we're gonna have to lure people back here again.
Can you move that money around in different ads, or just have to be TV? Because who really watches TV ads anymore? I mean that with like, the nicest, I mean.
No, I would agree.
I think it's streaming. Well, I think there's a generational piece to it. There is definitely streaming, but I think there's a general, I'm trying to think of my family. There's a generational piece to who is still paying capable than watching TV commercials. But I agree that doubling might not seem.
Okay, so I, yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to put it back down to, like.
You know, I'm living around between items.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. I'm not saying the cost. I'm saying, could you use that? As long as we don't go over.
Could I make a suggestion? Why don't we lower that to 30 and put that extra $10,000 in the glass floats event, which in 19 and 20 was closer to $20,000? I think that's been a popular thing that we've done in the past. I'd like to see it reinvigorated.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, on TV.
You might have to order them in advance. You might want to get them here now.
We're definitely gonna have to this time.
To do what?
Everything is, the supply chain is ridiculous.
We used to order them in September to get them, but now we're probably gonna have to order them now. Okay, any other changes on that, on that section there?
So you suggested, Dave, to bring, did you pay $10,000 to bring that to 20? And then bring the TV line down to 30?
Yes.
And that's fine. Like I said, those are total wild-ass guesses, right? He's just throwing spaghetti at the wall.
Do, on the internet digital media line?
There you go. That's, that's maybe more advertising there.
Well, do you guys have a, I'm trying to think of my words. You shouldn't have told me what time it was. My words would have come out there. Do you guys have a person that is a social media, that's their dog?
You have a consultant, right, that tells you what's best?
He does it. He doesn't tell me what's best. I don't need to.
He knows what's best.
She's a very professional marketing consultant.
Could you pay that person more to be promoting the glass float event?
He, we have a consultant.
Well, no, but if we're investing more money back into that glass float, like, for example, is it a flat fee, or can we pay him more to do different things?
Um, we, we have him on contract, we have basically on retainer, okay? He gets a flat fee each month to advise me. Basically, he's like a department head. He's like our engineer. We have Aaron Sweetman as our engineer. And so whenever I need to talk about marketing, and it can be anything. It can be internet marketing, it can be event marketing, like just this week, we sent him some stuff for Tim Harding for his boat race thing. Goldie, he's, he has gotten the artist that's done all of the Goldie figures. So they do everything. But he also himself does our social media stuff. Now, Visitor Center can post on our Facebook page, but when it comes to marketing, like, they usually post like pictures and stuff. But, but if you see like any kind of marketing stuff on the Facebook page, that's Bob. He's the one that's doing that.
And that's the budget line 2440223, internet digital media?
Yeah, all of that, he, like, all of the ads that we place on, like, Google, like, if people go, I want to go to the coast, we pay money to get our name there on the top, so that you click on us first. And there's all this whatever site optimization stuff. He works on our Visitor Center page. He's the one that sees, like, how many people visit our page each month, you know, what pages are they landing on? He has all that analytic stuff.
And his contract is 222, I think.
Thank you, I was listening for notes.
Contract services, that's him and some, a couple of other people. That's why I bumped it up a little bit, because we're gonna be doing some more, this is about every third year, we update the brochure in our collateral, and we're gonna be doing that this year. So I bumped that contract services up a little bit.
Yeah, a lot of the glass float marketing actually comes right out of the hotels. I mean, you know, if you do business here, you get a slip of paper, take it down to the Visitor Center kind of thing, too, so.
This year, they gave it to you when you bought it?
Yeah, we just, because of COVID, and we didn't want, in the past, everybody's come to the Visitor Center, and I didn't want the cooties at the Visitor Center. So we gave the floats to the actual, the businesses that wanted to participate. And then, it used to be if you spent $25, you got your receipt down to the Visitor Center, we gave you a free float. Now, what we did is we gave each of the participating businesses boxes, cases of free floats. And it's like, then we let them decide, you know, is it $25, $50, whatever. You guys get to get on the free float. So now they don't have to drive down to the Visitor Center.
Are they giving you the receipts, though?
We give them a supply of.
Okay, because that was the cool thing about us getting the receipts, because we were tracking the volume.
Again, the cootie factor. I go for people at the visitor center.
I understand, but that was the benefit of getting the receipts.
I just like it, because I think it's something that's unique that we're doing, especially in our area of the coast. And so it's something people remember. I remember a couple years ago, we had a gentleman in at my work, and he travels all over the world, and he was staying at the hotel, and he got a slip to paper, and by God, he was going down to the Visitor Center to get his glass float before he flew back to Mexico.
And the funny thing is, like, there's nothing special. These are purchased in China. There's nothing.
I know, but.
But people will not so.
It's just the way people are wired, right? Something free!
Yeah.
Fun time to go hunting for them, too.
Yeah, it's a little adventure, isn't it? Okay, so any more on that expense page?
Yes, I do. The trade shows, 2440 to 15, it went down. And I know that for the last two years, it's been minimal. But are we not anticipating getting back?
I kept it the same as it was this year, at 4,500. And the reason why it was 77 for the actual year-to-date was because that was two years of shows that were billed in one year. Okay, so, so ready to go to Fund 25?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, again, that's the Event Center on the Beach Maintenance Fund. 1% of our 7% goes directly here. And of this, 95 cents of every dollar we collect goes there. So the city doesn't actually even keep the general fund portion of that. We put that there. Now, the way this is spent out, again, because we got some new folks, this is one where.
Can you tell me the page number?
35.
Okay, so we, I don't approve any of the expenditures out of this fund, and I did that deliberately, because it's a neighboring jurisdiction. I did not want people saying, Jody didn't let me build something at the fairgrounds. So I asked that the council decide the projects that they would fund at the, at the fairgrounds. And they have a set of policies that they follow to fund projects from the fairgrounds. And in the past, we've done two, you can see the 1920 and the 2021, we've done two reroof projects that we funded for them. And then the fair manager and the fair board chair are coming to the June meeting to talk about their master plan, and then talk about projects that they have in the works. So I have a feeling, maybe not in ask in June, but probably for this fiscal year. And that's why I left, I put $200,000 in there, because previously, we were gonna do something with the arena roof, and then they found out that they needed to do some other things. So I thought, well, if they need to make some big capital improvement, a big capital project, they can ask the council for that. Okay, any questions on that one?
So they didn't do the project in which we were gonna borrow the money for?
Correct. And I still left the loan reserve in there in case we needed it.
And with our project that we're gonna be doing for our own infrastructure, do we still have that cash?
Uh, yes.
And then the ARPO, are we done with that one? Any questions?
Page 36 is a brand-new fund. This is, and the reason for that is, this is the money that I spoke about in the, in the budget message, about the two payments of the approximately $255,000. And I didn't, I didn't get the opportunity to talk to Councilor Skinner before the meeting. But when you look at these pages, okay, all of this money, obviously, is in one bank account, okay? There's like, there's not like 50 bank accounts at the bank for, for the city. But in our general ledger, we have different bank accounts. And so in order for us to track this money easily, it's not a requirement, but for me, it works better if it's just all by itself. When I have to do the reporting back to the feds on how we have spent this money, it's a whole lot easier to have it in its own fund, and then it's not commingled with anything else. So that's why we have a new fund for this year. And that, Anthony, Assistant Anthony looked up, and he said that we have to have the funds committed to a project by 2026, which hopefully, we will have done and spent it all prior to that. But at the council meeting on money, we were talking about, was there a timeline on when we had to spend that money? We have to have it committed to a project by 2026. And right now, we have our first one committed to a project, but the second amount that we're gonna receive this year has not been committed yet, and the council will decide what to do with that. But, but that's why we have a new fund. We expect to receive another $255,000 payment this year. I put down expenditures, because we just now started spending on the $255,000 we got in August. So I, so I budgeted for that one. And then all I did was I put other ARPO projects, because it's up to the council to decide how you guys want to spend the next 225, but I needed to give it a budget line item.
Most likely to be housing, right?
I, it probably, that's, that's one of the things that we can spend it on. And that is something that is of the most benefit to our community, so.
But still, critical needs.
Yeah, I mean, it is a critical, but that's how you're using, you know, the first group. And, I mean, the other side of it is businesses, and I don't know what you can do or what they need, but, I mean, you don't want to rule out that, I mean, you're just charging more taxes to those motel people and not giving them any of that.
They need housing for their staff.
Yeah, but, wow, it's just.
Yeah, but the key, though, with the motel owners is they actually get paid to collect the tax. So they.
Oh, yeah, huge amount.
Well, no, but I'm saying, it's not them paying it. They collect the tax, and they get 5% for their trouble.
And Tammy comes in to run the room and complains at how high their taxes.
Tammy wouldn't complain.
Technically, the council decided to look into Wi-Fi citywide. So far, that's not looking so great as a possible project, so we may have to come up with a Plan B.
Well, since that would coos Curry, it's still.
They were gonna do broadband, which would be wired. We were trying to think, because there are ways we could do wireless.
Oh, I see.
Like have an area where you have Wi-Fi.
There's the rollout cost to do it, the equipment, and then there's monthly fees. And this, you know, how would we come up with the money for monthly fees? So I don't know if we're gonna be able to get that done, but.
So that's, so that's our new fund. And as things get done out of that, we'll update everybody on how the funds are going there. So any, any additional questions on the new Fund 31?
Nope.
Okay, next page, 37, is state revenue sharing. That's shared revenue, oh, speaking of shared revenue, we need to talk about that. On your, the, at your spots, every year, we have to do a resolution that says we elect to receive state revenue sharing. And I put the draft resolution in front of you. And, and it's no different than the last year, the year before, the 10 years prior to that. Just the dates are changed. But the state requires that we, at our budget meeting, we discuss what we intend to do with the state revenue sharing. And what the city has always done is that's what we use as fleet replacement. And in the past, it covered fleet replacement, but now it covers a portion of fleet replacement. And so we're required to talk about it at the budget hearing, and then when the council adopts the budget, they also have to have a public hearing to talk about it, in case anyone has any questions about it. But as long as I've worked for the city, that's what we use state revenue sharing for.
Okay, I just have a question. So the fleet replacement fund is the $24,000 this year, and this is the 24. Is it both going for the same truck, or are they going for two different?
The, the revenue comes into the state revenue sharing fund, and then it is transferred out to the fleet.
Oh, so it is the same thing. Okay, I got you now.
And likely, the truck that, that Will is gonna purchase, it's probably gonna be more than $25,000. But when we find out what that final cost is, and we just, we will do a budget amendment next year. But yeah, the, the state revenue sharing is the money in, the fleet replacement is the money out. So if anyone.
Does this all have to be read into the report?
No, we just have to say that we discussed it. And A, we want to get state revenue sharing. Yes, of course we do. And B, our intended use for it, and we, and pretty much, there's no strings attached. We can use it for whatever we want to use it for. It's just historically, as long as I've worked here, we've used it for fleet replacement. So it's, it's.
No, I still support that.
Yeah, me too.
I support it, too, but I do have a question. Why do you think it was decided that the money was used for fleet replacement? Do you have any?
There was no other way to pay for police cars.
Well, I think back in the day, the person that, that I used to work for many years ago, that, that side of the building was not necessarily good members of, they didn't like those people. And so, so it was like, well, we're not gonna buy police cars. And so then they came up with this idea. It's like, okay, well, you can have a car, as long as it doesn't cost any city money. And so, so it started out as kind of, kind of a rude thing, but, but it actually is kind of good. I mean, you know, we can use it to replace cars, because we need to replace vehicles.
Every other year, we would buy a police car, and that was the only way they could get a car.
Because they wouldn't allow any city revenue to, to do that.
And so now, the way the budget's structured, it's structured to expect that money. So it hasn't changed, where then the city's putting in the budget, fleet replacement money. We're just still relying on that state redistribution, something?
Well, like I said, nowadays, the vehicles are much more than what we get from state revenue. In the past, it was pretty even. So we have to make up for it from other funds. So likely, the, the rest, depending on what the, the truck comes in at, and Will was estimating that he could get one for between 29 and 32. So whatever that amount is, will make up between the. we'll make up between the water and sewer funds. Jody? I can't see the battery on this. I'm wondering if you want to check it? Probably ran out. Nope, still left two bars.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Still going.
So, everybody's okay with us except state revenue sharing?
Yep.
Buy and be it.
Yes. Okay, uh, Page Thirty-Eight, um, Small City Allotment, those were the grant funds that we got from ODOT. Um, that's been zeroed out for this coming year because we, we don't anticipate being allowed to apply for any of those funds this year. The following year, we can, so in twenty-three, twenty-four, we can, so nothing proposed for that. Um, I'll just keep going unless you guys tell me to stop, okay? So, um, Page Thirty-Nine, that's a debt service fund. Um, this was a loan that was paid off several years ago. Um, we had a higher interest rate on the loan that we had with the state, so we took money from, um, sewer reserve, building reserve, and water reserve to pay it off. That's what this is. The money comes in from the debt service portion of the sewer bill, and I believe it's the six-dollar portion that pays this, and that's a per-customer charge, and then that's, that's just the reserve money comes in, and it goes to pay the loan, um, I think it's once a year, maybe twice a year. Water reserve, as I mentioned earlier, the reserve charge, we increased that slightly this year for, um, the, we increased the, the surcharge by one dollar, um, in anticipation of, you know, building up the, the rep, the reserve and the debt service that we're going to need for the, the loan that Will was talking about.
That dollar adds up in a hurry.
I figured, I, I have the formulas, what I did, but I, I think we have twelve-hundred, it was either twelve-hundred or fourteen-hundred water customers, and that's going to be proposed at eight dollars a customer in, in over twelve months, so that's what I came up with. Um, the, for the miscellaneous revenue, that, where that's highway loan, highway one-on-one loan, principal and interest, that's the loan that I was just talking about for the debt service from the highway one-on-one fund, just that I just mentioned a minute ago. We do have a current loan with Infrastructure Finance Authority, IFA, for when we purchased the water intake property in twenty-eighteen. That's what that twenty-three thousand is.
And that's the project. If we're currently, are we ready to award?
Not that one, no. That, that was for the purchase of the water intake. The next page on sixty-six, that's the water intake project that Will was talking about.
Okay.
Um, we're in the middle of Phase One, as you can see, where all the streets and everything are all torn up. Um, Phase Two will be replacing the, the well at the water intake, um, building a new building there, because we actually had a fire there eleven years ago, and it's like, all of them are duct taped.
Hold on a second, Dave.
What?
So, um, we used to only have an easement where our water intake was, and so we purchased the property, so we owned it, had complete control of it, because it's becoming a Homeland Security issue to not own it. We wanted to fence it, and that's the first thing that Will did. Now, you may continue.
Yep, and so then, the Phase Two project that he was talking about, where we only got the one bidder, and we needed, it was overbid, and we needed to ask, okay, that's the portion to replace the water intake, and then there was, um, structural changes that were going to be made to the water plant, and for those of you that are unfamiliar, if you drive up Jerry's Flat, about four miles up, where, where, what is called the Old Mill Site, you'll see there's a little building, and then across the street, there's a couple of like shop-like looking buildings. They're not marked for Homeland Security reasons, but the guys, I may have put razor wire on the top of it, for normally, we just have like, um, fence wire, but I put razor wire on. Um, they call it prison, so if you drive up there, as you're like going up towards Agdeness, that's where the water, the water intake's on this side of the river, the water plant's on this side. Totally looks nondescript. If you didn't know what it was, you wouldn't have any idea. Doesn't say this is the city of Old Beach, you wouldn't know. Down there, we can tell a little bit more, because this is public parks, but, but Homeland Security, it's supposed to be like, you know, pay no attention to that over there. Okay, so we talked about that one earlier when Will was here, um, and now, as, um, Dave said, we pretty much are just getting into the reserve funds, and I didn't propose any, I don't think I proposed any changes over the last year for the reserve funds.
Arthur Two, do we have to review?
Um, yes, let me look at the narrative, and when we say review, we just have to say, is this a fund that we still believe that we should be, um, is it still a valid fund? Because when we save money as the government, we have to explain, it's not a bad thing to save money, but we just have to say why we're saving it.
Yeah, seventy-two Visitor Center, yeah.
So, Page Seventeen is where it starts, and Page Eighteen has the Visitor Center South Peach Park Reserve Fund, and then Page Twenty has the Streets and Culvert Repair Reserve Fund, so if you could just look at those quickly and say...
Do you have any idea how much money is in the visitor center fund now?
Not at the top of my head. I want to say we've been paying into it for...
Fund was started in fifteen.
Was established by the...
No, it wasn't started in nineteen.
Um, I, I will get, I will get you the cash balance. I was going to do that anyway for all the funds, but the cash balance is in all the reserve funds when I send you the updates.
Yeah, because we know we have to do something with that parking lot. That's going to be very expensive. We should probably tilt one of those down.
The parking lot you were referring to earlier is the visitor center parking lot?
Yes, it's all, um, as we'll call it, the, the technical term is allegering, where it all cracks up and it's like scales.
The bottom and the top we're doing.
On, thank you.
Makes one wonder if the base was run right at first place.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah. My little engineer friend over here. So, yeah, I, you guys agree that the visitor center reserve fund is still a good idea?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then Page Twenty?
Streets and Culvert Repair Reserve Fund. That was because if we didn't have any money saved, um, we have a lot of culverts, and we didn't have any money saved to replace them, and we found out they're very expensive. Minimum sixty grand. So Superintendent Nudal said you must put money aside.
I don't know what page.
Uh, Page Twenty is the Streets and Culvert...
That's the write-up, but where's?
Oh, okay, where's the, it's, I want to say the very last one, so...
Ninety-eight, yeah, so Page Fifty-Three.
Fifty-three. And, like I said, I don't think on any of the reserve funds I proposed any changes. I think I just left them where they were, but let me just double-check that one.
Let's see.
Yeah, the visitor center is the same as last year.
Yeah, I didn't see any changes when I was scanning through them.
Yeah, I think I just proposed what we proposed last year.
Maybe next year, we should use a study to decide how much should be in each fund.
What did you say?
I was thinking maybe next year, we could budget, not this one, but the next one, to actually do a study on how much money should be in each reserve.
Well, some of them, when we reviewed them, they, we put limits on, because if you read the, the narratives, they say a maximum of, of X number of dollars on some of them, but not all of them. I don't know how long ago that was done.
And actually, for things like the nuisance abatement, that would probably be a good idea, and just say, you know, like, when it gets to...
Yeah, except now we have a building that costs a billion dollars.
Yeah, right. But yeah, does someone think I could propose any changes for...
Say, we're going to build a, a billion-dollar visitor center?
What did you say?
No, no.
No, we have a building that is in bad shape that we may end up having to tear down.
Is that the visitor center?
It's going to cost us a billion dollars. No, it's a Danish building.
Now, the old three-quarter building.
Oh, the abatement, yeah.
I'm trying really hard to get this...
I noticed one disappeared down there on Forest Office Road the other day.
I heard that, too. I was surprised that they did that.
I didn't think that was a tear-down, but...
Yeah, because whoever, you know, after the guy, you know, after he died, I thought they fixed it up. Hippie John's old house.
They did?
And that was a cinder block building. I was like, when, I think it was Will told me, I was like, what?
Yeah, and it was, you know, I mean, after he died, and they, I mean, they painted it, and they had, no, it's not, I mean, the yard, it was beautiful, and apparently, they want the properties for something else.
Oh, yeah, it's kind of a bloody money down there. Gravel roads.
Well, the property next to it is Chief White's.
Yeah.
And he is just...
Just up the hill?
Yeah, he's got the whole Sunset Property, which goes from the top to the bottom.
His property, you know where Marsha Bernard lives? His starts right behind Marsha Bernard's, and it does butt up against Hippie John's, and then comes down behind Snazik's and then over. Okay, any changes to the, to any of those, those reserve funds?
I'm still, I'll look at my way through them here. Oh, I had a question on the water deposits reserve. Did you ever start giving back the refunds?
Yes, we did. We started that in twenty-nineteen, I believe it was, and so now, if any deposit, we went back twenty years, and then after that, I want to say, anything after ten years gets re, whatever that says in the resolution.
Was anybody surprised, or did they acknowledge, or say, hey, I think some...
A couple people did, because some of them, we had deposits going back to the sixties.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, seriously.
And can, uh, let me ask you a question about that, just because it came up with Kuzcuri Electric. So if the person has passed away, you just don't, you just keep the money? What do you do?
We try to send it to the estate.
Okay, yeah, because I was surprised with, with, when Ethel, my mother-in-law, died, that Kuzcuri Electric, all those credits for all those years were an inheritance, basically.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so you get, so all of those, you know, because they've been paying back their refunds, Kuzcuri Electric, every year, and so, yeah, when somebody dies, that's, it goes to...
She's got like eighty years' worth of cash.
She's got to get some for my grandmother.
Yeah, so it is, it's...
There you have it. So you can cash them out and/or accept.
Right, you can cash them out at a much lower rate, or you can just let them keep sending you little checks or...
Yeah, that's cool. I had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when, when she passed away, we would have refunded whatever to her account.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not worried about that, but I'm just saying, that's, that's what they do, but they don't go looking for the person. It was just, I had somebody else whose mother died say, don't forget to go to Kuzcuri Electric, and they send you a form, and you just fill it out and say, you know, Jeff, Jeff is the inheritor, and then they, they, just like Dave said, they say, either we'll pay you out now this much, or we'll continue to send you yearly checks.
That's interesting.
But it's just a form that you fill out, just so you know.
Civic Bar will never do that.
Yeah, Kim's pretty good at, she tries to track down, um, we have had a couple people that had passed away, and we couldn't find anybody related to them.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Okay.
We are like, we're not thinking of that, right?
Do you read for a motion as amended, or are we still?
Don't we have to open it up for public comment?
Oh, yeah. Can you turn it up?
Discussion.
What do you mean, open it up?
Can you see if there's somebody still there?
Um, it's like, yeah.
Dave said it's time for public comment.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, it's just time for public comment. We still have one person.
Speaking of which, I would just like to ask you...
Okay, you'll have the floor for a couple minutes. Can you hear us?
Uh, yes.
Oh, we can hear you beautifully.
Perfect. Um, yeah, other than, uh, my original question there, um, I think the Budget Committee and Council hit most of the topics that I lined up myself. Um, the only other thing I would say is, for some of the oddly named, um, budget line items there, that, uh, if we were to have, um, you know, probably for the course of a couple of years even, but, um, just like rough descriptions of a couple of those, like, key features, because I noticed that a lot of the questions revolved around what kind of things that money would be spent on, rather than even the specifics of this coming year, so, um, that might be something that, that keeps this kind of a, a subject matter down to nine p.m. instead of nine-thirty. That way, all you folks can get it off again, you know, home. And, uh, outside of that, um, I, I believe someone said something about double-checking the numbers and, and things of that nature for the couple of pieces there, and, um, I'd like to see that that gets done, but other than that, I have nothing else.
Well, thank you, sir, and, um, once the Budget Committee approves, the council can do a ten percent change, I believe, on adoption. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, I think we're good to go. Thank you so much.
I make the motion to approve the budget as amended.
I second that motion. You seconded me, thank you.
That was Vera, motion by Sanders. Any discussion? Okay. All right, Councilor Madison.
Aye.
Councilor Bradlin.
Aye.
Councilor Skinner.
Aye.
Councilor McGilvery.
Aye.
Councilor, oh, Ms. Vera.
Aye.
Ms. Swager.
Aye.
Mr. Sanders.
Aye.
Ms. Param.
Aye.
Okay, we have finished another budget.